Good afternoon. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order for this special meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloie is expected momentarily. Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Machinier?
Present.
Councilmember Getta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. City Treasurer, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? John Colville.
Sure, Mayor, but I can't stand because I just had knee surgery. So if that's okay?
Of course. I hope you're okay.
Yeah, I'm recovering. It's a week ago.
Go, go.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. I hope you recover quickly, John.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Members, this is a special meeting that is exclusively devoted to the beginning of our discussion and deliberations over how to spend, invest, the $112 million of American Rescue Plan funds that we are received and going to receive from the federal government. I know I have a, I hope it'll be a 10-minute presentation, not longer. But we first have a consent calendar, which is the regulatory and internal control framework for the city's use of these funds. Do members have any questions about the rules, the guidance, which, by the way, is iterative and ongoing, right? But...
I'll move consent.
Okay.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Do we have public testimony on item one, Madam Clerk?
So I do have members of the public with their hands raised. I encourage members of the public, if you aren't speaking on the consent calendar, please lower your hand.
Yeah, I would guess, without knowing, that the vast majority of people who have their hands up are, want to speak on item two, which is the main attraction for the afternoon.
That would be my assumption. I still have four hands raised. So, members of the public, I'll let you, the four, in. But if you can take down your hand if you are not speaking on the consent calendar. The first is Marbella.
Okay, well, if anyone wants to speak on item one, of course, we will hear them.
Marbella? Jorge, Marbella, are you speaking on the consent calendar?
Yes, this is Marbella, and I'm sorry, I want to speak on item two.
Okay. We'll get you back in the queue then, if that's okay.
George Santana?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed. Are you speaking on the consent calendar?
Yes, I appreciate all the work that has been done to try to get this money from the federal, and hopefully, a lot of Latinos will also benefit from this. I'm a retired professor after 37 years at Sac State. So congratulations, and I hope the meeting can go well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santana.
Thank you. Next speaker is Maria Elena.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm calling on behalf of positive organized community this afternoon. And the reason why we're commenting on this specific item is because we did look at the framework, and what we saw was that the mayor's intent is to use the same framework that was used with the CARES Act. And we were at the meeting where Councilmember Shamba Moli asked about accountability for the $10 million received for workforce development. So we feel that this plan is being rushed and that the previous framework was not as successful as the city is hoping it could have been. We do not want any more errors. We feel that a lot of the most marginalized communities were neglected last time around, and the organizations that are stepping up are not, they are not servicing the most marginalized communities. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Brenda Ruiz.
Good afternoon. This is Brenda Ruiz with the Sacramento Food Policy Council. I guess, feathering off of the previous caller's comments, we really encourage the city council and the mayor to adopt an equity framework for justice going forward. I agree with the previous caller that this framework is, with changing a few words and adding an item here or there, pretty much the same way framework from CARES. We know that President Biden has announced that, under his Build Back Better Agenda, that the purpose and intent of the ARPA funds is also to support sustainability and resiliency going forward, which both require a commitment to equity and justice. So we encourage you to have accountability for how the investment of any of these dollars will give us a more equitable and just Sacramento in the years ahead. We also would like the council to be in consideration that the ARPA funds be expended by December 2024 and final payments to be made by December 2026. The city council has an opportunity to invest more deeply by allotting the funds over a longer period of time so that the recipients can have budgets and frameworks for project implementation that support resiliency and sustainability. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Yvonne Deloney. Yvonne Deloney?
I agree with the previous comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more speakers on the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. There is a motion and a second on the consent calendar, which, just to be clear, is not a decision on how we're going to expend these resources, but just the overall regulatory framework that has been presented to us, actually, by the federal government. So let's call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie? Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Machinier?
Aye.
Councilmember Getta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right. The consent calendar passes. We now move to item two. And I am the presenter here. First of all, colleagues and members of the public, thank you so much for the opportunity to be your mayor and to present to you the beginning of a vision and a template for how we should spend these funds. I recognize that I do not have the only say. I do not have the final say. But I think it worked well with CARES, and I think it will work well here for me, as your mayor, to put out an idea that the community and my colleagues can examine, analyze, support, amend, and deliberate together and with our community to create an end product that we can all be very proud of. Let me talk about the process for just a moment because this is a discussion without a vote. Based on the input today, we will continue to work with, of course, our city manager and our city team and all of you as my colleagues within the bounds, of course, of the Brown Act to refine as appropriate and to prepare, over the next couple of weeks, to bring forward an action item to the city council for your deliberation. There's no strict timeline. We have some time to expend these funds. Obviously, the needs in the community and in our city are great, and we want to act with a sense of urgency, but we also want to get it right. So will it be a week, two weeks, three weeks? I think it depends a little bit on the discussion today and where we decide collectively in public with our community we want to go. I want to thank all of the people, all the community groups, all of the city staff, all of my colleagues who, in one way or another, informed the letter that is before you today and that has been presented publicly. This is, I hope you will see that, I hope you will see your work within some or all of the paragraphs and the pages contained within the letter. I want to thank the city staff for being very, very helpful to my team in putting this together. And I want to thank Scott White, my deputy chief of staff, who worked weekends and a lot of overtime with me to go through numerous drafts to get this into the shape that it is in. Thank you, Scott. Let me begin. $112 million of ARP funding is a tremendous opportunity for Sacramento, its inclusive economic future, and the future of all of our communities. But this opportunity does not stand alone. Our city is creating an arc of community investment that is redefining what it means to be a modern, growing, inclusive city. For this $112 million is on top of the $80 million-plus we invested in the community under the CARES Act, $119 million of Measure U and general fund investment we have made since November of 2018. None of what we have done is perfect or complete, but what is clear is that the city is adding to what it considers core to our mission as a city and as a city government. Basic services, public safety, will always remain a core priority. And our core responsibilities now and going forward must include investing directly in our communities, equity, inclusion, and opportunity, especially for disadvantaged communities. The categories of investment in my letter represent, in my opinion, both our city values and what the community is telling us they need and want. It is similar, but not identical, to CARES. I am recommending five clear categories to continue our arc and to continue to fight our way through this continuing pandemic because we are not through it yet. And our small businesses, our workers, our community-based organizations, and our residents are all still living with COVID-19. And so what are those five categories? First, I suggest that we invest in our commercial corridors to the tune of $30 million, that we invest in our businesses, in our workers, and in our people. I suggest that we follow the leadership of Vice Mayor Schenier, who convened a number of the business stakeholders to come forward with a set of ideas, maybe under the category of clean and safe, but also enlivening our commercial corridors with art and public art and performance and whatever it takes to make sure that all of our commercial corridors, starting but not ending with the downtown, are safe, clean, and vibrant and welcoming to the people of Sacramento, $8.2 million. I suggest that we put another $5 million specifically into the downtown and Old Sacramento. Not only is Old Sacramento had its share of challenges lately, but I can't get over the fact that one of the great losses during COVID was the fact that we lost our bond capacity under the hotel tax to be able to invest $40 million in modernizing Old Sacramento. And while $5 million may not do it all, it could certainly be a great catalyst to bridge us to when we can get those resources back and do the full incredible plan that was before this council, I believe, less than two years ago. I suggest that we invest $5 million directly in Del Paso Boulevard in North Sacramento. And yes, I know there will be some who say, "Well, there are other needy commercial corridors." Of course, there's more money under this category. But I want to tell you, I've represented this city, like many of you, for many years. And North Sacramento desperately needs the attention, the investment, and the help. It deserves and needs, and the people deserve and need, a separate call-out to really try to address some of the systemic historic issues. And by the way, there are so many great strengths in that community. And I want to support Councilmember Laloie's leadership here and have us together say we are going to create some focus in North Sacramento. I suggest $3.5 million to the Sacramento Inclusive Economic Development Council, basically our P-bids and our chambers and our community-based organizations who have done heroic work during the pandemic to help small businesses survive and who continue to be the backbone of so much of the work that we do. I know when it came to the comprehensive master plan on homelessness, they were key stakeholders because they are all about the health and vitality of our business sector and our commercial corridors. I suggest that we put forward $1 million for vaccine outreach and education. This one, we don't even have to describe why. We know we're struggling here, and we're in the midst of some contentious times with many, including our own employees, about how to get more people vaccinated. So let's do more than our part to make it easier and to provide whatever education might be missing from the equation here in our community. And then I say, let's set aside $7.3 million for council-led initiatives to improve our business corridors in Sacramento. Now, you know, I don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak, except I want to see this money go to the places where we can have the greatest impact, to help areas, and I'm loath to single out any in particular, but man, I know, I hear about North Gate Boulevard and Franklin Boulevard. And, you know, we paid a lot of attention, rightfully, to Stockton Boulevard. And there's Mack Road, and I'm going to leave out. So please don't be mad at me if I didn't describe yours because I intend to include all of the corridors that matter. But let's make this competitive. Let's take the best projects, and let's invest at least $7.3 million. By the way, I should say that this $112 million is on top of what is coming from the Congress and the Biden administration with infrastructure. We all know that Speaker Pelosi, the magician, is now figuring out how to get the $1 trillion bipartisan infrastructure passed and then follow that up with a $3.5 trillion. And how much that money's going to end up in Sacramento? Let me tell you something, a lot more than $112 million when you really add it all up. So consider this kind of a first tranche. And that reminds me, I really want to thank Congresswoman Matt Suie, Congressman Bera, our entire congressional delegation, our senators, my friend and former seatmate Alex Padilla and Diane Feinstein. And they've really gone to bat for us, and President Biden. And, I'm going to say it, Governor Newsom. Because so much money is flowing through the state and that his decisions and the legislature's decision, we're going to supplement that money in here as well. I digress. Second category. This one, we've had long talks about. This is housing and homelessness. I recommend we set aside $41 million. It's a bit of a random number, I know. But if you remember on that prior spreadsheet that we're trying to get to $100 million, and we're in constructive conversations with the county, and we are aiming to form a partnership. And so putting $100 million on the table and using $41 million to help get us there is vital as we embark on implementing this comprehensive siting plan. I do note the letter I received in the advocacy, for example, from the Sacramento Housing Alliance, who asked for $50 million for affordable housing, for permanent affordable housing. And I could not agree with you more in my heart. And what I say in my letter is that I would make, as your mayor, replenishing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund the top priority at mid-year, at mid-year, which we always know, especially if the economy continues to grow, is, will be good, and will be, there will be more money. So this is not a Hobson's choice, but it is a choice. And we have got to deal with the emergency, the homeless emergency, get people into safe ground, shelter, tiny homes. And yes, the permanent housing, remember, is within the $41 million and the $100 million. But we're not forgetting affordable housing. It's just a choice, given the amount of money that we have. Third category. Youth, workforce, and gang prevention. This is one, again, where Governor Newsom and the state have really helped us out because in the state budget that was passed and signed, there's $7 million, we're going to get $7 million, essentially discretionary money for youth. So I say, let's count that. And what I suggest here, of course, is $17 million. But we only need 2.75. No, I'm sorry. Let me get my number correct here. Wait. I have this, I have this down here. $2.75 billion, no, okay. $7 million, $7 million from the state and $10 million of ARP. That's what it is. $10 million of ARP, seven from the state. How does that break down? First of all, youth and workforce. Last year, of course, our CARES workforce investments funded 29 programs and positively benefited 2,100 residents. And I know Councilmember Laloie and others have asked for more documentation, but I'm telling you, workforce is a key piece of our economic development strategy. It must be. To transform low-wage jobs into high-wage jobs, to prepare people of all ages, especially young people, from the low-wage workforce to the high-wage workforce. Aggie Square's coming, the mobility center's coming, the rail yards is being developed. We're creating jobs. The economy's booming, thousands of people moving up here. Our kids need to be trained, and our adults need to be trained as well. We can get started on so many opportunities. And again, I'm loathe to call anything out, but darn it, I look at the heroic efforts of the La Familia Opportunity Center and what they're trying to do. And we can't fund the whole thing in this tranche, but we could certainly try to get started. Then there's separate funding for the youth pop-ups and enrichment, $2.5 million for the Digital Divide, $1 million for childcare, which I know is not enough, by the way. I know it. I know it, I know it, I know it. But let's wrestle with these numbers a little bit and do everything we can. And again, there may be other state monies and other sources we can get to. Gang prevention intervention. Rick Jennings, right, has been on the forefront of all of this. This was our discussion six, eight weeks ago around how to get the first million dollars out of CARES or general fund money. I forget what it was now. But now we got another 1.5 to not only do more on the prevention and secondary end, but also fund the tertiary direct gang intervention that we have committed to. My Vang has led on the, Councilmember Vang on the Food Justice Task Force, really organized. I was in a meeting last week with her. I mean, food insecurity became the defining issue of this pandemic to me, or at least the surprising issue of the pandemic. So $1 million to help organize ourselves so that we're more resilient and our community's more resilient around food access. Jay Schneer, Aggera, the CLC, and the CLC, the one-stop center at Aggie Square, so that we start out with a robust career pathways and workforce training for Aggie Square. And then I suggest $750,000 to get into the universal basic income debate. The United Way has led the way by raising private dollars to do, I believe, $700,000. Their pilot is off to a very promising start. I met with them a week or two ago. I think we should be investing in piloting universal basic income. Pick the target population, and let's be part of this national movement and not just watch it from afar. Next category, the creative economy. So here's a stat for you. In 2019, before the pandemic, creative industries in Sacramento were responsible for 1.2 billion in associated earnings in the city of Sacramento. I know this is one that traditionally has kind of fallen off the radar, but I am recommending $10 million because I say the arts and the creative economy are a fundamental underpinning of growing our modern economy. Every bit as important as sports, and I love sports. But it's every bit as important. And so, working with our new arts leader, we are, come up with an idea to say $2.5 million of direct grants to artists who need a hand up, professional development for those aspiring to go to the next level, facilities development, and then, of course, youth programming and youth development around the arts, and then $500,000 for tourism, which is, I know, a pittance compared to the last round, but we will help our tourism industry in any way and making art a central part of our attraction for people to come into the city is what this $500,000 is intended to address. Last but not least is we set aside $25 million. Worked very closely with the city manager on this for our city employees and our operational needs. $25 million. We know that our city employees have sacrificed a lot during this period of time, and many have been in difficult, hazardous jobs and that it has been difficult to get to the bargaining table and to provide the right kinds of thank yous for job well done. Setting aside the vaccine argument here for a moment, but we want to make sure that we've got resources for our city employees and for the various operational needs of the city that the city manager is always on top of. That's $112 million. And so, in conclusion, my job as your mayor is to put out a vision and a template. The community and the council with me and with the staff get to decide ultimately what the investment strategy should be. It's $112 million over two years. But one of the significant pieces of the letter that I hope that you noted was that I believe that if we can get as much of the second half of the $112 million out in the first year and use the expertise of our treasurer and our city finance staff to float the difference because it's a guaranteed tranche of money, that that's the way we ought to be thinking. I don't think about this as 56 plus 56. I think about it as 112. And we can figure out the cash flow, so to speak, along the way. So that is my presentation. I thank you for the few minutes and for your input and consideration. We can do this one of several ways. We could hear from the council members first, or we could go right to the public testimony. Madam Clerk, I imagine we have a few people.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Fabrizio Sasso is on from the Central Labor Council as well.
Right. I was going to call Fabrizio among the very first when we do the public testimony. I already talked to him, but I'm going to call Fabrizio. Yep?
Mr. Mayor, I have 29 people signed up to speak so far.
Okay. Why don't we take the testimony and we hear from Fabrizio first? Go ahead.
So Fabrizio Sasso?
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me some time today to talk about ARP funding. Appreciate the work that you did putting into this framework. You know, and despite all the rhetoric we've heard from media and the neighbors that the economy was closed, workers continued to wake up every single morning to go to work during this pandemic. And even throughout the darkest moments of our city, when the death toll was rising and infection rates growing, every Sacramentoan could rely on workers to prepare their food or teach their children, protect neighborhoods. And, you know, our workers are the ones who propped up the economy that really never closed. And so, you know, we've, uh, we're coming to the council today to communicate our intention of seeing that the American Recovery Plan funding be allocated and spent, really centering the health, safety sacrifice of workers in Sacramento uh, and those who actually are, have, have lost their war jobs during this pandemic. And it's Labor Council's deepest held conviction that, you know, solidarity empowerment with workers in our region is, is, is really important. And so as you begin to think about this funding uh, plan, you know, it's really important that you keep workers in mind. I just want to say that, you know, over the last couple of months, Labor Council has worked uh, with uh, Councilmember Valenzuela and we established the Sacramento Workers Priorities Working Group. Uh, and it included a wide range of stakeholders and workers and unions and community members. And we held a couple of listening sessions and we, uh, we had some surveys where we, uh, received feedback from, from workers about what they really wanted to see uh, out of this funding opportunity. Uh, and so I'll just kind of go through each of the areas real quick.
Fabrizio, if you could stop just for a moment. So I know it's a two-minute rule, but I know I've got some questions for you.
Sure.
I'm gonna ask the question and then give you another couple of minutes to, um, uh, to answer, okay?
Sure.
What, what do you think can be enhanced in this plan? Um, and, and what do you think we can add to this plan? Go ahead, take two, take two more minutes, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, so, so the, the, the number one issue for workers was childcare. As they go back to work, uh, many, many folks are having to make very difficult decisions on what to do, whether to go back to work or to take care of their children at home. And even though schools are beginning to open up in, in person, uh, there's still many other workers out there who are not able to afford childcare um, uh, and receive quality childcare. And so we're asking that the council consider additional funding beyond the million dollars and additional two million and hopefully work with school districts and the county to, uh, to, to leverage that into, into more uh, investment into childcare. Uh, the next uh, is, it is in regards to a barrier to going back to work, which is transportation. Uh, a lot of our, a lot of workers just don't have the means for transportation or can't afford uh, their own transportation or public transportation, including parking. And so we're asking that the city work with RT and create a, a plan for the poverty wage jobs, uh, the workers in those poverty wage jobs to, uh, provide free public transportation, but also eliminate the parking fees. There's a, there's a tax on workers, uh, that, that they have to pay, uh, just to go to work. Um, and then we want to see more worker outreach, education empowerment around COVID, but also a- around some of the, uh, other opportunities that they have, whether it's through EDD. We're approaching the, the cliff on September fourth uh, that, that, where unemployment insurance benefits will end for many people. Uh, and it's also coincides with the end of the eviction moratorium. So we're asking that the city immediately fund the Center for Workers' Rights at a hundred fifty thousand, which is needed like right now, but uh, with an additional four hundred thousand over the next couple of years, knowing that, uh, that this pandemic is, uh, not ending, uh, today or tomorrow. Uh, it's, and we have no end in sight. We're also asking that the city commits, uh, two point eight million uh, to Labor Council and our partners for the continued work that we do uh, to, uh, around education outreach, empowerment programs, uh, support services, like buying equipment and tools uh, for people that are going through apprenticeship programs, uh, who don't have those meetings and worker collaboratives. Um, in, in the area of workforce development.
You can wrap it up, Fabrizio, sure appreciated and thank you.
Sure. Um, around workforce development, uh, we're asking that we uh, get out of this mindset that low-wage jobs are naturally occurring, but, uh, they are not. They are intentional. Uh, we want to make low-wage jobs into high-wage jobs. And so we want to take a qualitative approach to, uh, to workforce development. It's not enough to just train someone and place someone into the workforce. We have to obligate ourselves to ensure that they're able to live off their wages. And so, uh, what we want is, uh, we want to place people into high-road jobs, of course, but we should also be making sure that workforce development partners receiving ARP funding is they're providing livable wages, benefits and an environment that recognizes workers' rights to organize. And then around economic development, we want more workers to own the, the, the companies that they are, uh, working for. And so we're asking that the city invest and, and look into a worker-owned co-op incubator that promotes worker-owned businesses that leads to self-sufficiency and independence, especially in those underserved communities. Uh, and then, um, finally.
Yeah, I need, I need you to wrap it up. I've given you more than time, more than five minutes here, right? Please.
So I, so I think we also need to support businesses, uh, but in the way, uh, the way we do it is in direct benefit to the workers in the form of hiring incentives, wages and healthcare. Uh, and so making sure that if we are giving money to the, the businesses, that, that, that is in, uh, that's being used directly to, uh, to pay for wages, uh, benefits and healthcare. And so with that, we, um, we hope that the council considers some of these, uh, some of these proposals and, uh, look forward to hearing from you all.
Thank you, your letter was very constructive. Um, I thank you for your input. You're a major stakeholder here and voice of work and people will always be heard. So thank you and thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Okay, let us, uh, move now, I'll go two minutes. Um, uh, let's hear twenty-eight members of the public or more, go ahead.
Thank you, Marbella.
Yes, hi, good, good afternoon. I'm Marbella Sala and I'm GNNA board member. And on behalf of GNNA, I just want to thank the council and in particular Councilwoman Harris for the financial support given to our small businesses, residents, youth and our schools this past year. However, Gardenland Northgate continues to need additional financial support. Um, I'm sure you're aware that Gardenland Northgate community has an unemployment rate of twelve point seven percent, an average income of twenty-nine thousand dollars. All our small businesses are family-owned and operated and Gardenland Northgate has, um, sixty percent of the community are Latinos. This data is pre-COVID. So you can imagine what COVID has done to our community. It's only exacerbated the situation. Needless to say, I was disheartened to see that we were not mentioned in the recommendations for the small business recovery allocations. And I appreciate, Mayor, that you, you, you did mention Northgate and you recognize that some communities were being left off. But I, you also, Mayor, had um, indicated that you feel that Del Paso is the most neglected in the city. And I want to suggest that Northgate Gardenland is equally neglected in the city. I, I would say that Del Paso and Northgate are one of the equally neglected communities of the city. And I would ask that you allocate at least a minimum of twenty, I mean, ten million dollars to Northgate Gardenland. In addition, we need, um, increased resource for workforce development. And as I mentioned, our unemployment rate is high. This past year, the Hispanic Chamber was an excellent partner for, with GNNA in trying to address workforce development and also, um, working with our small businesses. They should be included in your plan. And lastly, I really encourage that you utilize the Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, um, I was just saying that you utilize the funds, the hundred, um, Housing Trust Fund to bring more affordable housing into our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Brandon Black.
Can you hear me?
We can, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Brandon Black, Director of Public Policy with the Sacramento Metro Chamber. We want to begin by thanking the mayor and city council and staff for your thoughtfulness and consideration for our small business community as we look to rebuild and recover from what has been a devastating global pandemic. As the voice of business throughout the Sacramento region, we support the proposed allocation of thirty million dollars of ARP funding to be used to support our small business community throughout the city. By doing so, the city will continue its efforts in supporting our businesses, the backbone of our local economy, by investing in our vital economic corridors as they continue to navigate through these unprecedented times. Although seventeen months have passed since the initial onset of the COVID-nineteen pandemic and economic shutdown statewide, businesses in the city of Sacramento remain in crisis. The unfortunate reality of COVID-nineteen impacts coupled with the, with the current increases in positive cases and ever-changing health and workforce regulation have created an overwhelming environment that many small businesses cannot continue to withstand without additional assistance. Small business owners have been forced to combat many challenges since the reopening of our economy, including opening at full capacity, rehiring of workers, providing a clean and safe environment, all while navigating mask and vaccine mandates with little to no notice or support. We must ensure our small business community has the resources available to them to fully reopen and build back our city. By further investing in our community, employers can develop a strategic plan for operational success by utilizing the technical and support services this funding will provide. We urge the city council to support this substantial investment. Thank you for your unwavering dedication to our city and for ensuring that local small businesses can continue serving Sacramento. We look forward to working with you further. Thank you and appreciate your time this afternoon.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Joni Titherington.
Good afternoon, council members and Mayor Steinberg. Uh, I hope you can hear me.
Yeah.
Awesome, thanks. I hope everybody is, uh, trying to thrive during these very difficult times. Um, so I'm with Neighbor Works Sacramento and I operate the Oak Park Farmers Market. Um, and I am, uh, responding in regards to the Healthy Food Task Force, the Food Task Force in, in support, um, uh, of the allocation of one million dollars with an amendment um, that, um, the city last year spent well over twenty-six million dollars um, supporting a food access in the city of Sacramento. And that really is not enough dollars to be put into the bucket for, uh, uh, for food access in the city of Sacramento. Um, the COVID nineteen has impacted all of us, uh, very severely. Uh, many of us struggling to do more with less. Uh, again, um, although we are America's farm-to-fort capital, uh, here in our very own backyard, many of the families and residents are, are food insecure uh, and necessary. Last year, we had an increase of twenty-nine percent with our EBT uh, use at the Oak Park Farmers Market in just one market. It was two hundred and twenty-nine percent increase in EBT sales at our second Wednesday market. This is evidence that we need more monies and a annual fund uh, that is created, uh, in the tune of around one, uh, percent of the total one hundred uh, uh, twelve million dollars. And with that, I thank you very much for your time and, and, uh, the opportunity to let you know uh, where, where I stand and where, uh, folks in our city stand in regards to food access. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Michael Alt. Michael Alt.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Sorry about that. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council, city manager, Michael Alt, uh, calling on behalf of the Downtown Partnership. Really want to start by applauding the mayor, uh, for all the efforts, uh, on this process. We know this process was not easy. Uh, there's a lot of competing priorities, but we do feel these expenditures are going to make a huge difference in our ability to come out of the pandemic. Uh, we also appreciate the thoughtfulness in the process uh, of engaging the business community with Vice Mayor Shneer. Uh, I think that was a very helpful and deliberative process. Uh, dedicating additional funds to our small business community, we strongly feel will revitalize our downtown core and the neighborhoods and business districts, uh, that really are the backbone of our economy. It's vital that we support the efforts to continue to focus on clean and safe environment throughout the city as we all encourage employees to return to work specifically in downtown. Uh, our own data collected from, uh, our organization has really highlighted what we see as a dramatic seventy-eight percent drop in office traffic over the past eighteen months. And the lock, loss of pedestrian traffic has resulted in an unprecedented numbers of our local businesses permanently looking to close their doors. Historically, downtown has been an economic engine for this city and providing property and incentive tax uh, has been key. Nearly half of the city's property and TOT tax comes from downtown and we employ nearly forty percent of the city's workforce. And it's critical that we restart this economic engine. We urge you to continue to invest in our businesses, our cultural amenities and creative opportunities. We loved what we heard about downtown and old Sacramento, but we must have a clean and safe environment. Your staff has been incredible to work with, uh, throughout this process and have been great partners. These impacts will continue to nurture the local economy, our identity in this region. We applaud you for these efforts and you have my word. We will be your partner as we continue to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jenna Abbott.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Thank you so much for taking the time to, uh, put together such a thoughtful and focused plan. I want to let you know that the River District stands proudly with our colleagues who are part of the Inclusive Economic Development Council. The focus on business revitalization is warranted and the right approach. When family-owned businesses are supported, the city thrives. And when the city thrives, the region thrives. And when the region thrives, the state thrives. I think I've made my point. Absolutely, we need to focus on our disadvantaged corridors and our, our businesses that are owned by minority owners in disadvantaged corridors and places. I want to tell you briefly just a couple of things that the Inclusive Economic Development money allowed the River District to do. We were able to give small micro grants to businesses that were struggling in the River District. I've had several of them tell me that without these grants, they may or may not have made it through the pandemic. But perhaps more importantly, these grants sent a message to these businesses that they were important to the city of Sacramento. So I want to thank you so much for the ability to do these things and for placing this as a priority with the A, A, ARPA money. We also were able to provide focused outreach to hard-to-reach businesses with the help and support of the city and our colleagues at the IEDC. In short, the River District strongly supports the framework that is put forward to spend and to support our businesses and our region and our community with this money. Thank you for the opportunity to go forward and talk about what's important to me and to the River District. Let's get this done.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Flavio Huesar.
Alrighty, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, first of all, uh, Mayor and City Council, thank you for this opportunity today. My name is Flavio Huesar and I am currently the president of GNNA. That is the, uh, Gardenland Northgate Neighborhood Association. First of all, I just want to ask that, uh, you continue to invest in our community, Northgate Boulevard. The, uh, plan that you have for the, uh, ARP framework, we request that you fund more money for, uh, Northgate Boulevard. We ask that you, uh, continue to partner with us. Uh, Jeff Harris has been a long, long advocate of our community and we ask that you continue to support, uh, uh, our community. Uh, as you know, different things in our community this last year since COVID-nineteen, many things of, of, you know, you've helped, you know, the investment that you have given to us. Uh, uh, you know, we've had the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, uh, link with us and invest with us and we partnered with them and, uh, we've partnered with other things. We're fighting for many different things in our community, air quality, safety. Yes, we have some murals coming up, which is awesome because the murals will set now, uh, a direction for our community that, uh, of, you know, a community that's vibrant, a community that's being invested into, that has long been left behind. Uh, you can walk down Northgate Boulevard and see that, uh, you know, the sidewalks are, the sidewalks originally from the thirties and forties. You know, uh, we, we need a huge investment in Northgate Boulevard. And so I paid with you, Mayor and City Council, to not forget Northgate Boulevard. Uh, the, the area of Northgate Boulevard is a thriving community, a diverse community that needs your help and your investment to continue to prosper and to grow. Uh, we thank you for this opportunity to speak today and we ask you to not forget us, but to continue to partner with us, to continue to, uh, help our community thrive and to grow and to become what it should be. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Arlen Orchard.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Arlen Orchard, the Chair of the California. Can you hear me?
You got you.
Great, great, thank you. So, uh, again, good afternoon, I'm Arlen Orchard, the Chair of the California Mobility Center, uh, a public-private consortium. initially formed by SMUD, Sacramento State, UC Davis and the Greater Sacramento Area Economic Council with strong support and help from the city of Sacramento. So thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak in support of the mayor's proposed ARP Act framework and I want to thank the mayor for specifically including the CMC in his funding proposal letter. Before I begin, I want to express my appreciation to the mayor, Councilman Guerra and the entire city council and city staff for the CARES Act grant, which allowed the CMC along with our community partners to train nearly 500 participants in basic advanced manufacturing and mobility jobs. The, we placed around 120 participants in good high-paying jobs and provided another 50-plus participants with paid internships. And I'm pleased to report that the vast majority of the participants were from communities most impacted by COVID. As we look to Sacramento's future, the need to retrain and prepare impacted workers for high-paying, advanced manufacturing and mobility-related jobs should continue to be a high priority for the city and our region. It's worth mentioning that unlike many other sectors, the advanced manufacturing sector remained robust throughout the pandemic. As we work towards a carbon-free transportation sector and economy, the CMC and our partners believe that workforce training in the advanced manufacturing and mobility space will play a critical role in attracting new businesses to our region, transitioning displaced workers in our disadvantaged neighborhoods into high-paying, durable jobs and making Sacramento a recognized leader in the new carbon-free economy. The CMC respectfully requests that the city continue to support our efforts with $3 to $4 million of additional funding. The mayor's ARP Act funding framework is an important first step and we look forward to continuing to engage with all of you in these important discussions. So again, thank you for your time and consideration in this important matter.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Gina Lujan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council, for taking this time and platform for us to be able to speak and be heard. I'm calling in request for funding support and investments directly into our workforce, creative economy and small business, also a direct investment into the Latino community. During COVID, Hacker Lab, which I'm the CEO of, was very, was hit pretty hard. We lost about 40% of our revenue during that time, yet with the COVID money, we were able to still serve 3,200 people for classes and instruction. We also had one on 1,080 hours of teacher instruction as well as giving out $66,000 in stipends that was provided via CARES funding. Through the collaboration of the IEDC, we were able to participate in helping 1,500 small businesses navigate through such a pandemic. We were also able to personally have one-on-one consultations with small business. I had one special client, I had many clients, but I had one special client that had a language barrier, also did not have access to technology, who personally came to my home to print documents and to use my computer because she did not have a laptop, so we were able to get her much-needed funds. My also request is for you to directly invest into the Latino community, which is 30% of our population, as well as the second most hit and affected by COVID. And if you could take a look at our Opportunity Center and La Familia and the great work that they're doing to support our Latino community during this crisis and pandemic, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much for for your support during the last year and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Igiro Okoro.
Hello.
Please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Adro Okoro. I am the Policy Director for the Sacramento Housing Alliance. We would first like to thank Mayor Steinberg for the aforementioned proposal for the allocation of the 112 million in federal American Rescue Plan funds, as well as the entire council for their commitment to addressing homelessness through the Comprehensive Siding Plan. The Sacramento Housing Alliance wants to urge you to make additional investments specifically dedicated to build affordable housing, including permanent supportive housing, to get people off the streets and into safe, accessible and affordable homes. The proposal includes $41 million from the ARP funds to implement the Comprehensive Siding Plan approved by City Council on August 10th. While the Siding Plan is important and a comprehensive first step to ending homelessness, there is a little investment dedicated to assist our community with the long-term solutions of permanent supportive housing. As stated in our August with letter, the pandemic continues to reveal the importance of home to our health, well-being and economic stability. With many individuals and families who are paid a low income, including many AAPI, Black, Indigenous, Latinx and other communities of color experiencing homelessness, facing disproportionate housing security due to historic inequities, now is the time to invest in affordable homes. Investments in shelter without even larger commitments to build new affordable housing would not achieve our goal of ending homelessness in Sacramento. So we're urging the mayor and council to make an immediate $50 million investment in the development of new affordable permanent supportive housing in addition to the investments in the Comprehensive Siding Plan. And the proposal to invest in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in February 2022 with the mid-year budget, we really need to look at using these funds currently available to us now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Charlie Cooper.
Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Proceed. First of all, I'd like to just thank the council members and our wonderful mayor for wonderful presentation of allocating the funds. And I am Charles Cooper and I am the Executive Director of Images Theater Company and Vice Board President of SARAH Sacramento Alliance for Regional Arts. And I'm just speaking today to just thank you for your past support of the arts and culture sector and Mayor Steinberg for your very thoughtful proposal and especially proposing fund, funding allocations for the, for the American Rescue Plan of $10 million to the arts and culture sector. Arts organization, arts businesses and individual artists were devastated during the pandemic and your past funding was able to, able to help us to get this far. We need this $10 million to support the arts and culture section and being a major player in the stimulation, stimulating the creative economy of Sacramento. The arts will bring people back out into their communities and engaged with one another again. The arts will help heal our youth who have suffered isolation, depression and anxiety. The arts education programming that is possible through this funding will help heal our communities. Many organizations are doing thoughtful intentional work and weaving social emotional learning into the arts so that students' mental health will be positively affected. So we at SARAH want to support this, the mayor's plan of giving $10 million to the arts and sector, arts and culture sector. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Carissa Gutierrez.
Hi, thank you so much. Good afternoon and thank you to Mayor Steinberg and our esteemed council members. My name is Carissa Gutierrez and it is an honor to serve as the Board Chair for the Latino Center of Art and Culture in Sacramento. I am first and foremost a Sacramentan, born here, raised in disinvested areas like North and South SAC, Northgate Boulevard and Fertridge respectively. And I grew up knowing that in order to receive access to parks and community centers and cultural experiences, I had to be bused into the better-funded school districts and/or travel long distances to see anything that represented our history as people of color, as Indigenous folks, as Latinos. And these barriers were only exacerbated during the shelter-in-place mandates. Culturally competent health and arts access have always been a concern for me and that is why I returned to Sacramento so many years ago, as I do this for my family and for my community. I am pleased to see and support Mayor Steinberg's proposed $10 million arts allocation for the city's American Rescue Plan funds. This shows a strong understanding of the direct impact the arts have within the creative economy and the role the arts play in creating a sense of place and identity in Sacramento. And of course, there is room for improvement. The arts and culture sector is one of the hardest hit during the pandemic, disproportionately impacting our Latino community, a majority of which were deemed essential throughout this time, and I am glad to read a plan to cultivate workforce development and get people engaged in the community through the arts. The Latino Center of Art and Culture is one of the oldest arts institutions in our city. Our work is dedicated to preserving and promoting cultural diversity and we pride ourselves in directly working with our fellow artists, performers and visionaries in weaving together the fabric that makes our Sacramento so rich and so vibrant. During the pandemic, our innovative spirit proved most useful in developing the Sacramento Artist Core, a project which hired dozens of multidisciplinary artists who created public health messaging around COVID prevention and were able to use their pay to cover the rent and basic needs. See, these artists and creatives are our vendors, our business partners, our service staff and our domestic workers and our community members. Often they are contractual or part-time, which makes them ineligible for benefits during the lockdowns. I am a proud alliance as well as we support the Latino Economic Council's proposal of $21 million, which includes investment in a health clinic, workforce development, education and the arts, which is rightfully due and needed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Steve Winlock.
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Thank you. This is Steve Winlock. I'm the Chair of the Arts, Culture and Creative Economy Commission and I was calling in support of the mayor's framework, especially part number four, as we talk about the arts and creative economy. And I just want to say thank you, council members. Thank you also, the mayor, as we start to look at making sure that we're, we're giving back and working with the creative economy. You know, one of the things I noticed that in the framework, that when we talk about supporting the creative economy, it actually goes into all of the different areas that have been outlined within the framework about how we can use the creative economy to actually support all those areas. So I, I just wanted to say that that's a part of that. I also wanted to assure the council members and that if, if this is focused on that as a commission, we will do our, we will assure that the, the actual, the funds that are going to be distributed will be through community outreach, collaboration and, and also being guided by our diversity and equity and inclusion frameworks. And, you know, one of the things that we're just very excited about in this framework, it aligns with your adopted Creative Edge Plan and, and in supporting and being a part of it. So I just wanted to kind of assure the council members and, and the mayor that as, if we move in this area, this will be our focus as a commission to make sure that this is supporting the development of our creative economy. Just want to say thank you again for all that you do in supporting the creative economy.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kristy Gonzalez.
Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council Members. I'm Kristy Gonzalez, Deputy Chief with WellSpace Health. We wanted to express our support of Mayor Steinberg's recommendations for the American Rescue Plan Act funding priorities for the city, particularly focus area number two that aims to serve our neighbors who are unhoused and experiencing homelessness. Each year, WellSpace Health serves thousands of unhoused and homeless individuals and families for medical care, dental care and behavioral health care. We know that the roofs that will be put over these heads are integral to the community's public health and can start to reduce disparities and health outcomes for these residents. We know that programs like the Substance Use Respite and Engagement Center, SHURE, help to connect these residents to vital alcohol and drug treatment programs and mental health supports and to make the difference in someone's journey to recovery. Since January, 20% of intoxicated residents who presented to the SHURE Center have been connected to treatment services immediately upon discharge and in some cases, getting into detox services in less than eight hours after first presenting for services. That number of immediate treatment access increases to 22% for residents who presented for using methamphetamines. Immediate resources like these made available to the most vulnerable residents of the city will help to reduce homelessness and beat the lasting impacts of this pandemic. Thank you, council members, for your consideration of how best to use these important dollars and we ask that you approve the plan presented today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Lee Lowe.
Can you all hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Good afternoon. My name is Lee Lowe and I'm a resident of Council District Two. I'm also the co-director, co-executive director of the Sacramento API Regional Network, soon to be renamed as the Asian American Liberation Network. And I'm calling in to thank the mayor for his proposal and recognize the efforts to help Sacramento recover from this pandemic. However, this proposal really overlooks the necessary investments to address the racial injustice and inequity that we are experiencing in Sacramento. On top of the experience, of experienced pandemic, communities of color have experienced a rise in racism in forms such as anti-blackness and anti-Asian violence. And in 2020 and 2021, the city of Sacramento passed a racial equity resolution and an anti-Asian hate resolution. I'm calling in to urge this council to make targeted investments to ensure that we are advancing the racial equity work that this council has already committed to. And thank you for mentioning the needs of the North Sacramento Neighborhoods and De Posse Boulevard. As a longtime resident who grew up in this part of town, truly one of the best investment in developing, in developing our neighborhood is really to directly invest in the community-based organizations and leaders to lead that development. And funding community advocates on the ground is necessary in bridging community members to the racial equity work. Many of our community members are monolingual or, or speak English as a second language and our targeted outreach education and empowerment is necessary to engage the ordinary community members because many of our community members are already overwhelmed with navigating a system that doesn't serve them and engaging with city initiatives are some of the last things they are thinking. Community advocates on the ground has continued to demonstrate their expertise in identifying these barriers and developing solutions and strategies to overcome them. The challenge has always been that community advocates have not been properly equipped and financed in order to effectively reach the mass of the community. And we are requesting that the mayor and council set aside $500,000 to support the civic infrastructure and capacity of community-based organizations to take on the racial equity work ahead. And as stated by this council, this initiative must be.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, and so just wanting to reiterate our support and the, and mayor and the council to set aside $500,000 to really support the infrastructure of community-based organizations to engage with the racial equity work ahead.
Thank you for your comments. Our next, next speaker is Liv Mo.
Hi there. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Good afternoon. I want to thank the council and Mayor Steinberg for the recommendation of $10 million to the arts and culture sector for the city. I also want to thank Mayor Steinberg for the recognition of the losses that our sector faced last year because I feel like it really legitimizes the impact that we have on the region's economy. Right now, myself and many of our colleagues are facing an unprecedented landscape, thinking that we would have been in a much different situation right now. And Delta is presenting a whole new range of challenges and a very real emotional impact for all of us that are really struggling to keep our doors open. Last year, the CARES Act funds that we received enabled us to not only survive, we also produced a series of programs that kept not only the artists and the patrons we served with the community at large connected to arts experiences, including making an online directory for almost 100 artists to make their work available to the public, presenting our virtual studio tour so that they could still try to sell their work. We produced a series of documentaries about regional artists that were provided free to schools, along with learning lessons and a lot of other programmatic offerings. Because we believe in the transformative influence of art on communities and the importance to mental health, many of these programs were offered at free or very low cost in order to make them accessible to the public. This isn't even touch on the work that we did through SARAH, enabling a group of smaller organizations to receive sustainability resources. We also provided a lot of grant mentorship to individual artists seeking to access the funds that the city had made available. We are very much looking forward to working with the city again and becoming, or growing into the role that we had served in the past in being an economic driver and a key piece of the fabric of this community and its identity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Maria Costa.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Special thank you to Councilmember Katie Valenzuela and Councilmember Erin Guerra for your time this afternoon. I'm the Director Emeritus of the Latino Center of Art and Culture and as our Board Chair, Carissa Gutierrez commented, the center supports the recommendation from the Latino Economic Council, representing a united community advocating that you disperse funding to our community, which has been one of the hardest hit from COVID-19. The Latino population in Sacramento has historically been at the low end of allocation of resources to strengthen our culturally-specific health, education, business and the arts services that we provide to Sacramento's Latino community. We have faith that the mayor, council and city manager will do the right thing with federal assistance. Also, as a board member of SARAH, I want to thank and acknowledge the vision of Mayor Steinberg's and this council, who demonstrated by allocating CARES funding for the arts, a vision that is now an example to the rest of the country. We and our partners, Diatro Naval and Diatro Espejo, created and implemented the Sacramento Center of Art and Culture. We and our partners, Diatro Naval and Diatro Espejo, created and implemented the Sacramento Artist Corps that has held up as a national model, as one of three successful workforce employment projects that compensated over 40 workers who found their income disappear overnight on March 15, 2000. This income has yet to reappear. We recommend approval of the $10 million for these workers and the organizations that support them. We look forward to working with you, and I want to just acknowledge and thank all the city employees who work so hard to assure that our organizations make our programs successful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kendra Macias Reed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Hi, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. My name is Kendra Macias Reed, and I am the Deputy Director of the Franklin Boulevard Business District and of our nonprofit arm, the Franklin Neighborhood Development Corporation. I'm calling in today to express my support for Mayor Steinberg's American Rescue Plan Act funding proposal that calls for $30 million for small business and commercial corridor revitalization. As you are already aware, our small and minority-owned businesses have been struggling to survive the negative impacts of this pandemic. And while the rising cases of the Delta variant, we are not yet in the clear. The Franklin Boulevard District is an active partner in the Sacramento Inclusive Economic Development Collaborative, and we respectfully ask that you continue to fund this collaborative of 16 chambers and P bids, as it has been instrumental in providing critical resources to our small business community. Over the past year and a half, we have been working tirelessly in our aging commercial corridors to provide language-specific access to resources, including one-on-one technical assistance in Spanish, Hmong, and other languages, and help applying for small business loans and grants, including the popular Alfresco outdoor dining program. By continuing to fund the SAC IEDC, you will be helping thousands of small and minority-owned businesses survive and thrive. These businesses, many of whom are multi-generational and family-owned, provide over $20 million a year in economic impact and over 76,000 jobs in the City of Sacramento. It is imperative that we continue to grow and invest in our commercial corridors and small businesses to achieve vibrant, livable, and walkable neighborhoods for our communities to enjoy for generations to come. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Allison Cagliari. Allison Cagliari?
There we go. Now, can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Allison Cagliari. I'm a 35-year resident of Sacramento's District Three and the Executive Director of Friends of Sacramento Arts and on the board for SARA. I first want to thank you, Mayor Steinberg, and the members of the city council for your dedication and leadership in leading this city, especially during the last 17 months. And thank you, mayor, for this comprehensive proposal that you have prepared, which reflects our values as citizens and residents of the City of Sacramento. I'm here today to join with the other voices to voice my support of the $10 million proposed for the arts and creative economy as part of the proposal. The arts and creative economy has been greatly impacted by this pandemic. Specifically, for artists and creative workers, 86% of them had to cancel events or had events canceled on them. 30% on pay cuts. The average total financial loss per artist was $38,000. For arts organizations and creative businesses, there was a loss of $1.6 million in lost attendance, $1.2 million in unanticipated expenditures, and $28.4 million in cuts to expenditures. 46% of the arts organizations cut staff salaries, and 37% terminated or laid off staff. These numbers represent people who are part of this community and are dedicated to creating and providing visual and performing arts and arts education experiences. Your continued support of and investment in the arts and culture demonstrates your understanding and appreciation of the synergy between all areas of our city's economy, including the arts. When the arts and the creative economy suffer, other areas of our community suffer, both financially and in terms of what makes our community a vibrant place to live and work. Thank you for your sincere consideration of this proposal, your leadership, and the wise distribution of the American Rescue Plan funds to further restore our community. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Amy Takahama. Please proceed.
My name is Amy Takahama. I'm a resident of South Natomas. I'm the president of the Natomas Garden and Arts Club. Our club has been working with Jeff Harris and the city manager to build and support cultural equity, to build our garden and arts center and support cultural equity to the communities north of the American River. I would like to start by thanking, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank you and the city council for the hard work and direction putting together this ARPA distribution template. All in all, I support your priorities, and I am pleased with the direction of the city's projects and growth. These are details that have been mentioned before, but I would like to suggest for the record that you hear the requests of South Natomas, North Gate, and Gardenland, especially as regards to the investment in the Del Paso corridor. I fully support investing in the Del Paso corridor. It is an important cultural asset for the city, and we want to do all that we can to assure its success, but it does not make sense to invest in the Del Paso corridor without investing in the surrounding communities of Gardenland, North Gate, and South Natomas. Strategically, Highway 160 should not be the only route into Del Paso. It makes good, sustainable economic sense to support the surrounding communities. The creative economy funding included in the mayor's proposal can be used to build a geographically contiguous economic bridge from Doco, Old Sac, Discovery Park, through South Natomas, North Gate, and Gardenland, and into the Del Paso corridor. You know our community is active, organized, and ready
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you very much for your, for listening. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Tracy Schall.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of city council. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your continued commitment to ensure equity is part of all that we do in the City of Sacramento. As a longtime economic development professional, I've had the opportunity to support the Sacramento Inclusive Economic Development Collaborative, affectionately known as SAC IEDC, the past two years, and I have witnessed what can be done when 15 organizations come together with a singular focus, and that is to assist small businesses in any way that they can. COVID-19 laid bare the inequities facing many of our minority small business owners, as well as those that are located in our less affluent, less connected commercial corridors. Challenges facing these business owners included lack of technical assistance and professional services to assist them with gathering the necessary paperwork to apply for loans or other grant programs, not being able to access potential programs and other assistant opportunities because of language and cultural barriers, and even mistrust and fear. With CARES funding, the SAC IEDC partner organization stepped in and were able to provide nearly 1,500 small businesses with critically important expertise and support. Examples included translating documents and holding training sessions in language to ensure that everyone had the opportunity to learn and be able to conduct business, and really reaching out to those that are those that are the hardest to reach because of the language and cultural barriers. It included walking our aging corridors, going door-to-door, to ensure that our business owners knew what was happening and what they could and couldn't do, so they could stay safe and in compliance. It was about reducing the digital divide that is so current and prevalent in our city that faces so many of our small business owners, and this included simple things like even
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I respectfully request that the SAC IEDC be able to continue funding, because healthy businesses equal healthy communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Alberto Ayala.
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Alberto Ayala. I'm the Executive Director of the Sacramento Metro Air Quality Management District. I wanted to take the time to acknowledge the fact that many of the priorities in the mayor's plan have a strong nexus with clean air and low-carbon development. So we have an opportunity to work together and amplify the benefit of these investments. Several of the priorities that the mayor spoke about resonate very clearly with what we are trying to do at the Sacramento district, specifically the priorities related to disadvantaged communities, low-income communities. As an air agency in the region, we are in the middle of implementation of a number of environmental justice and equity strategies. These are guiding priorities for many of the programs that we as an air agency are trying to implement. So with the strong representation on our Board of Directors that the City of Sacramento enjoys, I believe we have an opportunity to work together and amplify the benefits of our joint investments. More recently, under leadership of Councilmember Eric Guerra, who happens to be our current Chair of our Board of Directors, we have been challenging ourselves to see if we can better invest in cleaner projects and low-carbon development opportunities funded by state grants. And we want to do those investments in a way that also leads to co-benefits like economic development. So I thank you for the time, and again, I look forward to working with the City of Sacramento through our Board of Directors, as well as the team at the city, to implement these good ideas for clean air and other benefits. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your time. Our next speaker is Richard Falcone.
Thank you. Yes, sorry. Thank you. Had to mute there. Good afternoon, mayor, city council. My name is Richard Falcone, Executive Director of Diatro Naval, and I'm also a local artist and an arts advocate here in Sacramento. Proud partner, along with Maria Costa, with the Latino Center of Art and Culture and the good work that we were able to do as a result of the funding that we received from the CARES Act for the Sacramento Artist Corps. But today, I am calling to show my support for the Latino Economic Council's proposal of the $21 million to support a health clinic, workforce development, education, and the arts. I am also in support of the proposed $10 million allocation for the arts, as the mayor has proposed. The Latino community has been one of the hardest-hit sectors in the region. Additionally, artists continue to struggle, and you've heard so many of my colleagues talk about today. Please accept my report of these initiatives. Let's give the Latino community the support they need and show them that their efforts as essential workers and artists is not overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is CBCC.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. My name is Samuel Kenzie, I'm the Outreach Coordinator for the California Black Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber and our President Jake Keen, we want to thank Mayor Steinberg and the council for allocating money to small businesses. We continue to be a support system for small businesses here in Sacramento and statewide, and we continue to partner with organizations like the Asian Chamber and other organizations to help small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daniel Savala.
Hey, good afternoon, mayor and members of the city council. Daniel Savala, Executive Director of the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership, and also a resident here of North Sac, a lifelong Sacramentoan, who, as my good friend Clarissa said earlier, who was born and raised in several of these underrepresented corridors throughout my life, Oak Park, Jeep Parkway, Stockton Boulevard, Fruit Ridge and Franklin. And here today, I call Del Paso Boulevard home, and I have the honor and the privilege to work with business and property owners throughout Del Paso Boulevard. And so, mayor, we want to call in today and say thank you, and Councilmember Lowy, for making Del Paso Boulevard a priority and North Sacramento a priority. I want to urge the council to support that. But also, mayor, this commitment to aging corridors as part of your legacy, sir, you know, during the campaign for Measure U, it's one of the questions that a lot of us had is, will the mayor and will the council keep its word when it comes to passing this tax and let alone seeing it through? The SAC IEDC is that keep you honest group. The SAC IEDC came together and, as we step back, has been able to pick up the torch and be this advocacy group for aging corridors in Sacramento. The great pivot after COVID-19 is the SAC IEDC did a tremendous amount of work in North Sacramento and even the Gardenland-North Gate community, with the help of the SAC IEDC, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Promotores, and people like myself who are on North Gate Boulevard engaging small business owners, and all coming together. And that doesn't happen for places like Del Paso Boulevard or North Gate without an organization like the Sacramento IEDC. So I want to share that with you, and thank you very much for your strong commitment to Del Paso Boulevard and the lasting commitment and legacy to aging corridors in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Selena Pryor.
Good afternoon, and thank you. My name is Selena Pryor. I'm the president of the Black Small Business Association of California. I wanted to just support the mayor's proposed ARPA framework and thank the mayor, Vice President Shaner, and the city council for their thoughtful approach in deploying these critical relief dollars. We are very supportive of the small business funding, any kind of supports for small business. We are here for it. However, we would like for you to keep in mind that the BSBA and the City of Sacramento has enjoyed a great partnership. We've been able to service a lot of the black small businesses in the City of Sacramento and statewide, and we want to make sure that you don't forget that the black small business community has lost 40 to 47% of our small businesses to permanent closures. And so, we, our community, needs the funding. We need this funding. It is critical to the survival of our businesses. Thank you for your time, and have a great day.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Mycie Zjung.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Shaner, and members of city council. My name is Mycie Zjung, and I am the Community Outreach Coordinator for Hmong Innovating Politics, also known as HIP. On behalf of HIP, I am speaking in support of the proposed $1 million allocation from the American Rescue Plan to continue COVID-19 vaccine outreach and education. In addition, invest these dollars in local organizations who are doing this critical work. At the start of the pandemic, HIP was one of the first organizations in partnership with Hmong Youth and Parents United to respond with in-language COVID-19 resources for our communities, because we knew that they were going to be the most impacted. We continue to do this work throughout 2020 with little to no funding. Over the past year, we worked closely with Councilmember Ving and the Save Coalition in South Sacramento to secure a COVID-19 vaccine clinic at the Pennell Center and outreach to diverse community members to get vaccinated. In March alone, HIP facilitated over 1,000 vaccination appointments. This clinic still remains one of the largest vaccine clinics in South Sacramento and serves an area that continues to be the most impacted by the pandemic. Through our work, HIP provided in-language phone making, canvassing, and hosted interviews on ethnic media, Facebook Lives. Per the Sacramento County Public Health Epidemiology COVID-19 Dashboard, 81% of the population in the City of Sacramento are fully vaccinated. However, with the supply of vaccines exceeding the demand, we need to remain persistent in providing vaccine outreach and education to build vaccine confidence, particularly in immigrant communities and harder-reach areas. With this funding, we will get closer to getting the needed majority, if not all, of our community members vaccinated and overcome this pandemic together. We know that our work and the trust that we've been able to build with community members are vital to a successful recovery. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kalima Mutagi.
Yes, hello. My name is Kalima Mutagi, and I am a community organizer of Sacramento Act. While I'm appreciative that there was some conversation between the mayor and community stakeholders, I'm concerned that there was not a broader, more accessible means for retrieving community input, particularly from disadvantaged communities for the most affected by COVID and whom the ARP money is meant to serve. There should have been a broader mechanism of gathering community input, be it a community survey like the county did, or a series of public forums held at accessible hours for working-class families. I'm pleased to hear that violence prevention and intervention was acknowledged as I'm pleased to hear that violence prevention and intervention was acknowledged as an area of investment, but $1.5 million is not nearly enough. As community has repeatedly stated, Sacramento deserves an adequate and long-term strategy and funding to violence prevention. At minimum, we would like you to extend to a three-year funding commitment for community-based violence prevention and intervention. I highly recommend you read President Biden's speech where he highlights the urgent and relevant need for community-based violence prevention and intervention. As the city moves forward with a racial equity lens, I hope that partners and stakeholders should be consulted about the appropriate level of administrative support required to implement the overall proposal of equality. And a participatory democracy constituents have a right to provide input, particularly in regards to funding that is designed for our relief. And so I look forward to seeing how both the mayor and council plan to incorporate outreach to disadvantaged communities and proactively seek their input and opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Heather Fargo. Heather Fargo.
Hello. Okay, I think that's right now.
We can hear you.
Hi there. My name is Heather Fargo, former mayor. Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today on this incredible opportunity to invest once again in our community. As you all know, the needs are great and you're hearing from a lot of people about what you should and should not do, and it's a tough decision. But I think you're heading in the right direction. I do want to just add a couple of suggestions. One, not too many people here have mentioned childcare, probably because all the mothers that are busy doing childcare don't have time to call you at two in the afternoon. But I do want to put in a plug, a suggestion for neighborhood-based childcare centers that you would help create and fund throughout the city in order to support all of the women that would like to go back to work but can't or women who would like to go into some of your workforce development opportunities and that sort of thing. Without childcare, I think it's really going to hold back a big part of the economy. And if we're concerned about equity, which I know you are, I hope you will consider to not only consider racial equity but also geographic equity since we are so diverse as a community, and also gender equity. I think that's very important. I do want to support the funding for the public libraries and parks and recreation programs that the city offers. Those are real level playing fields for the community to access what they would like to have, and I think it's important you continue to invest in them. And just one final point, one of the reasons why you've heard from so many people on North Gate Boulevard, and I agree with them, is that North Gate, since it does not have a P-Bid, is not part of this inclusive, not quite inclusive, Economic Development Council. And if there's a way you could include North Gate in that organization so that they could have a seat at the table, I think that would help for future investments for them and citywide. Thank you very much for the chance and good luck with all of your decisions. Appreciate your work. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is a phone caller, last four digits of their phone number is 4366. Please proceed. Phone caller, last four digits, 4366. You're unmuted. Please begin. Next caller is Rick Lurkey. Rick Lurkey.
Thank you. My name is Rick Lurkey and I represent the North State Building Industry Association Foundation. And we rise to support the youth training and game prevention programs, portion of the mayor's proposed American Rescue Act framework and funding priorities letter. Currently, we're working with 327 employers to meet their workforce needs. In our most recent August survey, these employers indicated that ninety, that ninety-seven of them are seeking to fill 637 positions in the construction industry at an average wage of $28 an hour. So we heartily support any initiative that will reach out to the residents and get them involved in getting the training if necessary and gain them place to work. Given the conversation last week combined with the mayor's letter, I would like to reinforce and emphasize a couple of ideas that were shared, and that is we really encourage reaching out to the county and perhaps other jurisdictions to leverage these funds and this investment to combine with others so that more people can be served. We also encourage, in this discussion, a clear definition of metrics. What are, what do you want to do to be successful and how do we create the data systems that capture the work of others? And finally, the issue really is focus and are, we encourage a focus on the residents and providing a diversity of opportunities for them to be successful. Thank you for the opportunity to support your project and efforts.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Joanna.
Hi, my name is Johanna Hire. And I work with the Sacramento Tenants Union and the Eviction Defense Network. And I'm calling in with the comment about the housing component of Mayor Steinberg's proposed framework. I was a little disappointed to see that there was no money allocated to keeping currently housed tenants in their homes, especially because this is such a critical moment. The state eviction protections are set to expire on October 1st. And it's just, you know, from being on the ground with this, it's really, it's a patchwork and tenants are confused and there's, it's been hard for people to stay in their homes. I do appreciate and acknowledge that funds were already set aside for rental assistance, but there have been some serious barriers to actually getting that money to tenants who need it. And that's just one dimension of the problems that are facing Sacramento tenants right now. Some city programs, like the tenant protection program and code enforcement, that should be addressing these issues are often a little bit more comfortable working with landlords and have proven to be difficult for tenants to sort of access and navigate. And the other piece of that is that tenants are most vulnerable to eviction and displacement when lots of things are going wrong and they may not be able to go through these sort of complicated channels to get the help they need. So all that to say that I would like to recommend that money be allocated for a special tenant advocate to help tenants identify appropriate resources and assist and advocate for them as they navigate these programs. The city does have services and programs to help tenants address some of the most acute and common issues they're facing, such as unsafe housing, harassment, difficulties accessing rental assistance and unjust evictions. An advocate whose role is to support and advocate for tenants would make, would ultimately make these services more effective and accessible to Sacramento tenants. And I wanted to mention that this idea actually originally came from Mayor Steinberg in a conversation we had with some other tenants union members, and I thought it was really great, and I would love to see that included in this, in this plan.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Lou Nguyen.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember for your time. My name is Louis Nguyen. I'm the President of the NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce. We are a small group of all the Vietnamese businesses in Sacramento, a niche that is neglected by a lot of other groups which probably don't know exist. Most of the businesses owned by Vietnamese are nail salon and restaurant. Those two sectors are heavily being hit during the pandemic, mostly local businesses. We are, have been struggling the last year just trying to get rehiring process. It's been a very long road. So we are asking support, not a lot, not twenty, not ten, just barely $2 million to support the infrastructure of this group to keep the small businesses move forward. Not tomorrow, now, immediately. We've been struggling long enough. The PPP that we got barely have enough rent, barely have enough to cover the payroll. Everything else from this point on, it's on the owners. I'm asking and the community and mayor and councilmember to remember us. We exist, we're here. Support us. We are the backbone of the city. What you put in, you will get out. Everything. This community is all about small businesses. So we exist, again, that's NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ms. T.
Mayor, okay, first of all, I'm super excited about what our mayor is proposing. Thank you, thank you, thank you, by way of the $10 million for the arts. And the last time we did this during the CARES Act funding, you proposed resources that completely altered the way we were able to serve our community. In fact, we went from servicing 7,000 youth locally to 192,000 youth by way of distance learning nationally. And 7,800 educators became our educators that we were doing professional development with, helping them get online to help our students. And through the arts and the proper funding of programs like ours, you know, we became first liners, boots on the ground, helping our families with social services. Because of the relationships we had through the arts, we were able to connect our students back to the school systems. A lot of schools had lost a lot of kids. Once they disconnected from them through the arts, we were able to not only help our parents, but we would help our youth with workforce development. Our kids became entrepreneurs in the thick of all of this because of your support, and they became supplemental providers for their families. So a lot of our families made it through through the entrepreneurship, the art training that we were able to extend to our kids because of the support that you gave us to help us build programs that actually work. I'm heavily endorsing what you're proposing. The $10 million is, it's great for arts organizations, our arts community, and I'll add that the national arts community, I know many of them that not only noticed what Sacramento did, but also took notes from what Sacramento did with how they were activating the arts, which helped our small businesses, our communities of color, our youth, and our youth workforce. So I'm endorsing it. I'm saying thank you. I'm saying let's keep doing what works.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kathy Rodriguez-Aguirre. Kathy Rodriguez-Aguirre.
Hello?
Hello?
Please proceed.
Hello?
Kathy, you have two minutes to address the council.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. My name is Kathy Rodriguez-Aguirre. My name is Kathy Rodriguez-Aguirre. I'm the President and CEO for the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And I want to thank Mayor Steinberg for including the $30 million allocation for business in his American Rescue Plan proposal. Funding, support, and assistance is still an important and critical need for small business. Our small businesses, especially minority-owned, Latino-owned businesses bore the brunt of COVID-19 closures and mandates, and the reopening we had hoped for is still in process. The funding will be critical as businesses move towards, move forward towards recovery. Critical to this work and will be is the SAC IEDC, the collaboration of chambers and P-Bids providing in-language and in-cultural small business technical assistance and support in an organized grassroots strategy, and we've been responsible for helping businesses to pivot as needed and keeping them from closing. I'm especially proud of the work that we've been able to do out in the North Gate Gardenland area to get them resources that are sorely needed. As one of the partners of SAC IEDC, the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber, we have worked together to ensure that our hardest-to-reach businesses receive the education and resources needed. We appreciate that by including SAC IEDC in this proposal, you've seen the value of the work we have done and will continue to do. Long before the pandemic hit, our commercial corridors were under-resourced and under-invested in. The pandemic showed the gaps of opportunity that desperately deserve our focus. The ARP funding can provide relief overdue to so many. It is time to provide intentional and equitable support for our small minority-owned businesses that have been the anchors of our neighborhoods and corridors. Thank you for consideration of SAC IEDC, of our small businesses, and our Latino community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Sacramento Youth Center.
Hi, my name is Adam. I'm the Sacramento Youth Center. I'm a co-founder and a North SAC resident. And I just wanted to say that we are located on Del Paso Boulevard because we saw the great need and potential in North Sacramento. We want our youth to have a space on the Boulevard that becomes a long-lasting and well-supported by the infrastructure on the Boulevard. We hope that we see our youth engaging in jobs here on the Boulevard. Not only jobs, but careers. We also want our youth to grow in a place that supports their mental health and has resources to do so, not only through programs, but the programs of other local CBOs. SYC has been able to help over 200 youth with workforce development funds and mental health mentoring with SAC Youth Works Funds, all via CARES funding that saw a great impact on the youth during some of the most trying times of the pandemic. We want to thank the mayor and the council for the support of the Boulevard and the youth who live in Sacramento. We look forward to the American Recovery Funding for more youth workforce development and youth services as well as helping the Del Paso Boulevard in North Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kevin P. Nguyen.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak and share my thoughts today. Number, thanks for attending the 11th Annual Redesignation of Los Saigon back on June 2nd. Thanks for coming down to Los Saigon. I'm Kevin Nguyen, the President, Co-Founder of CPALS, which stands for Community Partner Advocate Los Saigon, Sacramento. Our motto is CPALS uplifting, just means united people with leaders to innovate and flourish together through inspirational building goodwill. So over the last 11 years of Vietnamese community within Los Saigon, we're ready to partner up with the city of Sacramento and rally up 350-plus small businesses within two-mile stretch of Los Saigon, which is South Sacramento on Ford Road and Stockton Boulevard down to Fruit Ridge. And we were able to officially designate it as the Business District now formally known as Los Saigon. We were also able to work with Caltrans to install the freeway sign, exit here, you know, next exit, Los Saigon, ready to work with Stockton Boulevard Partnership, Ford Road Partnership, and help improve the business corridor installing attractive banners and such. We also partnered with, up with a lot of multiple Chamber of Commerce to help attract new business there. We did all this with just local funding, like sponsorship and, and local businesses, but no funding at all. So now we want to see if we can get some help from the government over the last 11 years. And our, we're hoping with that 2% of the 112 million, which is 2.24 million, we'll be able to grow exponentially, including mental wealth, health and wellness, employment program, employee training, and small business technical support. So together, we can thrive with just 2% of the ARP funds and two leadership team, CPALS being one of them and the city of Sacramento being the second. So thanks for acknowledging CPALS along with NorCal Vietnamese Chamber as the community partner advocate of Los Saigon of Sacramento, and considering our request for 2%. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Emily Bayme Michaels. Emily Bayme Michaels.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. It is Emily Bayme Michaels, Executive Director of the Midtown Association. It is so powerful to hear so many parts of our community organized and here to offer their support of this decision before you. We're here to do the same. We wanted to acknowledge our support of the framework that's been outlined for the funding that's before you. Specifically, we'd like to acknowledge the work that Councilmember Shanier did to bring an incredibly diverse group of business stakeholders together to talk about what's possible with these funds. I also like to acknowledge our council members that represent our Midtown Association area, Councilmember Valenzuela and Harris for the work that they have done to really ensure that our community is all on the same page moving forward. Through the initial launch of recovery funds from the CARES Act, the city set the stage by supporting small businesses through direct grants, launching the Alfresco Dining Program, directly funding our local artists and supporting our creative economy. With the ARP funding, the city has the opportunity to continue to build upon that immediate relief with long-term sustaining efforts that have the ability to really sustain and support our business community ongoing. We'd like to identify the following three priorities, which we know echo many of the priorities we've heard our colleagues say, as well as priorities of you all as members of our council. We would like to find an elegant path forward that continues and expands the Alfresco Dining Program. There are more than 30 restaurants in our neighborhood that have utilized this program and are really hopeful that we can find a path that makes us a permanent fixture in our community. Second, we must continue to support our arts community and our creative economy with direct artist funding, pop-up programming, and large-scale events. As you know, Midtown in our central city is really the heart of creative performance in many ways in our region. But we share that, that space with so many of our colleagues that have called in today and really echo the need to support their efforts. And finally, we must ensure that we're engaged in initiatives and plans that create a safe and welcoming Um, and finally, we must ensure that we're engaged in initiatives and plans that create a safe and welcoming environment for everyone as we welcome guests back to our central city and urban core. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment, um, and thank you for your leadership with this decision that's before you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Heidi Kaiser.
Good afternoon, my name is Heidi Kaiser. I'm the Public Policy Officer for Child Action. We operate Sacramento subsidized childcare program and resource and referral services. We also help childcare providers get licensed to build their capacity. Our agency renders training and resources for early educators, so they have the tools they need to provide quality childcare. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of Child Action. We respectfully ask the city of Sacramento's council members to support the mayor's proposal to allocate 1 million of the American Rescue Plan Act funding to childcare services. Additionally, please consider supporting council member Guerres' proposals on how to direct the 1 million in childcare funding. Opening new childcare facilities in addition to supporting workforce development are critical to both our childcare providers and the families that they serve. We appreciate the council members' unwavering advocacy for childcare. Both families and childcare providers continue to be negatively impacted by the pandemic. Throughout the pandemic, we've seen a continuous increase in childcare facility closures. The provision of sufficient childcare is critical to Sacramento's economic recovery. Rebuilding and improving Sacramento's childcare infrastructure will be integral to rebuilding and improving the city of SAC's economy. We can help parents get back to work, back on their feet, and back to self-sufficiency. We all know the important role that childcare can play in the lives of our families. Our very own council member, Angela Gashby, is a great example of how subsidized childcare can help our families move towards a place of self-sufficiency. Uh, Child Action has also submitted some written testimony in the, on the record, uh, outlining why it's vital for childcare services to receive that million dollars in funding. Furthermore, we ask that you consider Sacramento's CLC Executive Director Sasso's request to provide additional funding beyond the million dollars. Thank you all um for your support for childcare.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Shira Lane. Shira Lane.
Can you hear me now?
We can, please proceed.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Shira with the Atrium Creative Innovation Center for Sustainability affiliated with over 550 Sacramento creatives. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, council and former council members for the essential investment in the creative economy last year. The creative community was decimated with so many creatives. They thanked the heavens and the stars for the CARES grants who used the funds to keep a roof over their head and adjust their business as much as they could to the new COVID reality. CARES funding was a seed investment to many projects that, to this day, continue to bring positive results. It is what made the Atrium program Sacramento.shop possible, an online marketplace for local Sacramento-made art, fashion, jewelry, beauty products and inventions, enabling over 60 local artists and creatives to sell nationwide. With CARES funding, we paid and trained many up-and-coming creatives and built their skills from teaching product photography, website design, marketing, PR, e-commerce and business management. These creatives later built their own businesses and scored permanent positions with some top marketing firms here in Sacramento. In February, Sacramento.shop evolved into a unique retail experience in Old Sacramento, an outdoor cafe that serves art, not food, and thousands are encouraged to play with art installations, generating a unique cultural tourist attraction. Today, that CARES-funded program is generating continuous income streams for our creative makers, innovating unique products like reusable water balloons or leather-looking wallets made out of old tires, products that could be future manufacturing plants. The creative economy is not a nice-to-have, it is a must-have. But the reopening struggles are real. With Delta leading to another possible winter lockdown, many creatives just haven't been able to lift their head for air. Creative thinking is what leads to successful innovations, and the climate ahead is going to need a hell of a lot of creative problem solving. Please invest in our creative economy and support the mayor's 10 million for our creative community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Cameron Collins.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name's Cameron Collins. I'm the Social Justice Investments Manager at United Way California Capital Region. Um, I'm calling to express my sincere appreciation for the mayor's recommendation of $750,000 of the American Rescue Plan funding uh for our guaranteed income program known as the Direct Investment Program in Sacramento, also known as DIPS. This funding will support the $700,000 that United Way has already committed to investing directly into Sacramento households, along with our partner up together. These funds go to families working hard every day to build their own economic resilience and meet their own goals. Guaranteed income initiatives like ours are growing throughout the nation because they recognize the inherent strengths of our community members who have far too often been under-invested in. After a year of economic turbulence, there's no better time than right now to invest in Sacramento households and trust them to use their unique expertise to meet their unique goals. Our participants are overwhelmingly women of color. Uh, many reside in the Del Paso Boulevard and South Sacramento areas. These recommended funds also will help participants meet the rapidly increasing cost of living in our region. According to recent data released by United Ways of California, 29% of Sacramento households learn, earn less than the real cost measure, and nearly 200,000 spend more than 30% of their income on rent alone. That fits with what our participants are telling us. Over 80% of them cited rent utilities or other bills as their number one spending priority, with childcare coming in very close. Um, myself, I'm a lifelong fifth-generation Sacramento, and it pleases me greatly to see an expanded opportunity for my neighbors and community. I really want to thank the mayor for this recommendation and the council for their consideration, especially council members Loi, Vang and Jennings, in whose districts many of our participants reside. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Patricia Fong Kushtera.
Good afternoon, Pat Fong Kushtera, President and CEO of the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce and Member of the SAC IEDC. We applaud the mayor and council for your unwavering commitment to our diverse small business community. We applaud the mayor and council for your commitment in viewing our underserved communities as assets worth investing in. A special thank you to Vice Mayor Shanir for his work with our small business community to help inform investment priorities. In particular, we would like to thank the mayor for including in his proposal a strong commitment to small businesses and commercial corridor revitalization and the SAC IEDC work. The SAC IEDC represents 16 community-based organizations, all working towards a common purpose, helping our diverse small business community survive and ultimately thrive, and we recognize that not all communities are represented by P-bids and are committed to working with the North Gate community and others as well. The SAC IEDC is one of the city's strongest partners in your economic development toolbox focused on helping our ethnically diverse small business community, as evidenced by the work done under this collaborative with CARES funding. Michael Alt said in his comments that half of the city's economy comes from the city's downtown core. The other half comes from our neighborhood commercial corridors, where many of our ethnically diverse small businesses reside. Let's continue to invest in these assets. Thank you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Mike Snell.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome, awesome. All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council, city managers. Special thanks to Councilmember Katie Valenzuela and her Chief of Staff, Michelle Perissette, also council members, uh, Vice Mayor Jay Shanir, Jeff Harris, Eric Garra and Mike Vang, as you all have made yourself easily accessible through your city pages and are also very fast to respond to community members like myself. My name is Mike Snell. I'm co-owner um in District Four of Sky Cloud. My partner, John Long, he can't attend this meeting. Um, however, just wanted to touch on some, some of the uh items that were, were talked about and uh echo. Um, you know, COVID did expose a lot. Um, and so, you know, a big focus should be on mental health services and outreach. Um, and then additional childcare center, uh, childcare, neighborhood childcare providers as well, for, for not only women, but just single parents. Um, and then veteran services. I'm a veteran. I've been back in Sacramento um since 2013. I was stationed at Beale. Um, and uh thankfully, my, uh, thankfully to the opportunity through cannabis, um, you know, I'll be able to rebound from my separation from the military. Uh, but however, veteran services, you know, for finding housing and, and even getting my disability um, uh, services from Iraq, Afghanistan, has all just been a barrier after barrier. Uh, in addition to, you know, I'm in support of affordable housing, contemporary education solutions, especially for the African-American communities, coding, we're all behind on this, and the traditional job force has crumbled due to COVID. And it's important that for the next generations, that's going to be in your seats as council, are properly educated and, you know, can function in the job force, it's imminent. Um, minority-owned businesses need support, uh, renewable energy, arts and culture, with heavy emphasis on culture. Um, and then lastly, social equity cannabis businesses like, like myself, we vow to serve alongside with the city to do impactful work, advancing our city's recovery from the turmoil that must, that metastasized during COVID.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
So with that said, you know, co- uh cannabis business, we'd like to work side with you, and so you'll see a return on investment um, as you, you know, assist with eliminating very significant, we can support the city. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Gonzalez. Jim Gonzalez.
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, this is Jim Gonzalez, Chair of the Latino Economic Council. Let me begin by praising uh the mayor's uh format uh for the American Recovery Act uh investments in the community, also to Councilman Eric Garra, Councilmember Valenzuela, uh, Councilmembers Vang, Bololi, uh, Jennings and Shanir for being accessible uh to discuss uh these investments in our underserved communities. Uh, the um format as presented is a wise and compassionate format, and in the coming weeks, uh, we look forward to continuing the dialogue uh so that uh we can see, as, as you know, we have submitted the Latino Economic Council uh budget request, and uh very pleased that early in the mayor's presentation, he mentioned the Opportunity Center uh for uh La Familia uh Counseling Services, and of course, uh, very delighted in the investment in the arts and also in small business as articulated by Maria Costa and Kathy Rodriguez. So having said that, just our uh gratitude for a very open and deliberative and accessible process uh for all underserved communities. And uh, on behalf of the Latino community, thanks uh for being there.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Rebecca Sandoval. Rebecca Sandoval.
Yes. Oh my God.
Rebecca, it's your turn to present.
I'm trying.
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm Rebecca Sandoval, Twin Rivers School Board Trustee for North Gate and Gardenland. Four of you are former school board members. One was a council member for Gardenland and North Gate. One is current Gardenland-North Gate Council member. I've been before you several times detailing the dangerous um traffic conditions that have existed for years on North Gate Boulevard, where our children walk, ride their bikes, parents drop off and pick up, and Twin Rivers buses transport children to Grant High School and Smythe Middle School on Richards Boulevard. Buses have to dart, dart out onto North Gate due to lack of streetlights. Sidewalks are inaccessible because they are non-ADA compliant due to utility poles every 10 feet in the middle of the sidewalk, forcing people onto the street. A street with four lanes and one suicide lane and a bike lane that are useless. North Gate Boulevard is a residential slash commercial corridor sandwiched between 160 Arden Garden Connector and 180. Cars travel at up to 70 miles an hour and do not slow when passing the schools on North Gate Boulevard. The communities of North Gate and Gardenland are largely Latino and have been here for decades. My family over 70 years. And yet we see few improvements in our neighborhood. Gardenland and North Gate deserves real improvements to our quality of life and a boulevard where our children can travel safely to school and that businesses can thrive. Um, in order for a P-bid to be successful on North Gate Boulevard, the conditions of that street need to be addressed and be, not become a responsibility of businesses there. And uh, I'd actually want to say, Gardenland and North Gate communities need to be included in the city's American Rescue Plan proposal and uh, school district consulted as well due to proximity of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Maria Elena, and council members, I have seven more speakers.
Yes, good afternoon. Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, yes, I just wanted, we, uh, this is Fatherless Organized Community calling again. We would just like to point out that while the mayor um does make a good argument for the North Sacramento investment, we would like to remind the city that part of the reason why North Sacramento continues to be underserved is because of the very organizations claiming to serve the North Sacramento area. Uh, with regards to childcare, we feel that it is very important to invest in childcare as that can delay parents in being able to move forward in providing better living environments for their children. Also, uh, when you talk about investing a million dollars in vaccines, we are going to again point at those community organizations like La Familia, which has partnered with groups in North Sacramento that have been very, very uh defiant in using masks since March of 2020. So while it's great to invest 1 million dollars in the vaccine, it really contradicts your efforts when individuals are not following the mandates, me, and, uh, nor the uh suggestions of the public health uh officers. And that is all we have for you today. We will be sending in letters. We also want you to support racial equity, and we want you to stop investing with people who do not serve the communities just because they're your friends. This is getting out of hand. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Noel Mora.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Noel, and I'm a resident of District Three in South Anatomas, as well as a Sacramento Measure U Committee member. Um, so I'd just like to thank the mayor and council and their respective staff for this extensive plan uh that I'm appreciative for all the work that it has in it. I have three very specific things that I would like to add my voice towards. They've all been um spoken of. The first being that I agree with the letter from the Sacramento Kids First Coalition, um, especially in regard to having sustainability and long-term um investment for any youth development and prevention programs be uh front of mind and front and center. I think that intentionality is key to meaningful uh and continuous impact. Secondly, as um a board member for the Anatomas Community Association, uh, I'd also like to emphasize that these infrastructural funds should in part be directed to uh the under-invested in uh North Gate neighborhood. I think revitalization includes the success of the communities that make uh small businesses thrive and vice versa. Um, and for these communities to be successful, a proportional, a proportional amount of uh neighborhood amenities should exist in said community. Uh, again, I have one last ask, so I, so just bear with me. Um, but that is to please invest in stimulating uh Latinx arts and culture um in this city with um such a large Latinx population uh just because it's an area that goes uh largely underfunded in relation to um the demographic and investment um proportionality. Um, and that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Nikki.
Hello?
Please proceed. Please proceed.
Yes. Hi, my name is Nikki Nguyen, and I am with CPALS, the Vice Chair of CPALS, that's Community Partnership Advocate for Los Saigon and Sacramento, and we collaborate with um the NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce. And I'm calling in to just want to say thank you, first of all, for mayor's and his proposal and just all the city council member definitely uh leading during this tough time. As you know, uh, we represent um the Vietnamese community in the small Asian area, which a lot of them has a lot of language barriers. They do a lot of business, but during the COVID, it had hurt them so much with the bad uh stigma of, of what's going on in the Asian community, as there's been a lot of hate crimes. A lot of them are fearful, and we are there just to um be that advocate and just to give them some relief that we are there for them, and just to know that, you know, a lot of them is trying to rebuild, and how could they pass this pandemic? A lot of them had to close down their shop. So we are asking for um a 2 million dollars just to help and also be that bridge to gap between the community and to uh the city council members and the leaders, because they feel like they don't have a voice as we come on board with them, just to let them know, a lot of them are not getting. As we come on board with them, just to let them know a lot of them are not getting the type of funding they're getting because of technology and the language barrier. And we had tried to set up, we set up webinars and tried to bridge that gap. So we are requesting just that we could have funding in this area because that area has been already devastated. But also a lot of problematic in the area, as you know, dealing with homelessness. There are just so much impact in that area that they're already trying to overcome. So the need is so much needed. We do need the funding and we really need to help our community. I appreciate that. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for hearing and.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Serena Joel. Serena Joel.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Serena Joel and I am the Community Programs Director for Capital Creative Alliance. The Capital Creative Alliance exists to champion and inspire creatives from different communities, identities and experiences to build a thriving Sacramento region. I'd first like to thank the mayor and the council for the leadership on these proposed funding opportunities. Specifically, your ongoing support for the arts and creative economy. We agree with the mayor's earlier comments on the creative economy. A healthy, creative community has the power to elevate our region's quality of life and economic prosperity. While the events of the past year and a half have weighed heavily on all Sacramentoans. The Capital Creative Alliance is committed to serving as a diverse and equitable voice of creatives throughout the greater Sacramento region. Your $10 million investment in the creative community will serve as a transformative opportunity to build capacity and stability for creatives across our city. Allowing our powerful and dynamic voices to be heard as we build back better and together. Everyone listening on this call can agree. We are creative problem solvers. We have entrepreneurial spirit and we think outside of the norm. This is the beauty of supporting the creative sector. You get unique solutions to difficult problems. Thank you for your leadership and I would I would invite all of you and members of the Sacramento creative community listening today. To attend our fall kickoff event at Urban Roots tomorrow, August 25th, beginning at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Albonita Arriba.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Albonita and I am a new resident. In the North Sacramento area. I recently, with everything going on, was very fortunate enough with my partner. To purchase a home and invest in the North Sacramento, which was affordable. And really want to. Thank Mayor Steinberg for his proposal. And would like to support the $5 million commitment to the North Sacramento area, especially the Del Paso Boulevard area. I live about hop and skip away from the Boulevard. It is a newer area for me, but it does appear to be a bit underserved. The reason why I invested in this area is because, you know, I'm young, starting a family. And see the potential of this Boulevard and some of the small businesses that are there. That could use this type of funding, which could change. The Boulevard in in the area that I've invested in as well as other new residents as and older residents. For, you know, years to come. There's a lot of nice places to go that. A lot of people don't know much about unless you take a walk out there, but I think funding like this could really help with. Having safe places to walk, cleaner area. More businesses and hopefully attract younger people. To this area to invest in as well and make it a thriving community. So I would hope that you can approve that commitment to that corridor and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Dean Peckham. Dean Peckham.
Sorry about that. I was still on mute. Good afternoon. This is Dean Peckham. I represent Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance. On behalf of SVMA and the Charles A. Jones Career and Education Center. I would like to echo Arlen Orchard's earlier comments. Our collaborative efforts with the CMC last year enabled us to develop and deploy. The region's first advanced manufacturing career pathways program with the Support of Cares Act funding. We are proposing to continue and expand this collaboration with the support of ARPA funding. The career pathways into advanced manufacturing provides a comprehensive pathway into mobility and advanced manufacturing careers. And funding will enable us to serve a larger population with a focus on race and gender equity. Recruiting people to the workforce that looks like the demographics of Sacramento. Our collaboration ensures that individuals interested in advanced manufacturing and clean mobility careers. Have the necessary educational support, case management and employer support. And technical skills to succeed and contribute to the well being of their families. We need to embrace a new paradigm. Where parents have the necessary support and skills to be successful, well paid adults who are able to take care of their children. And show them a pathway to be successful, happy adults. I appreciate Mayor Steinberg's comments and commitment to small businesses. What most people don't realize is that manufacturers are small businesses as well. 95% of the manufacturers in our region employ less than 50 people and struggle to find a qualified and well trained workforce. Last, I would like to encourage the council and the city manager. To allocate the necessary financial and human resources. Necessary to implement the city's ARPA agenda. It's imperative that the city have the staff resources to review and process RFPs. The budget change.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you and look forward to working with all of you, the community based organizations, organizations and.
Thank you for your comments. Our next, our last speaker is Sacheko.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg and City Council for taking the time and listening to all of our comments. It's been a long day, I'm sure for all of you. My name is Sacheko Konatsu. I'm the President of Natomas Community Association. And I'd like to echo some of the sentiments. Stated by some of my fellow residents and stakeholders. Del Paso, Northgate area and South Natomas are all three underserved. And we actually are a key vital component to the success of downtown. If you invest the money in the 160 where there's a new exit and entrance on there. We will be very key once the success of downtown is revitalized. In addition to that, South Natomas has been declining over the years. We too are experiencing higher crime. Less stuff for the youth to be active in. We've just lost our Natomas racket club and is going to be replaced with residential area. We have high speeding down West El Camino, which is the same problems that they experienced on Northgate. People blowing red lights. So we would like for the city to reconsider their allocation. And specifically allocate into South Natomas, North, Northgate area and Del Paso. All three combined so that we can be as equitable. As the rest of the city is in Sacramento. So thank you for the time that you've given us and we hope that this is a. Open dialogue that will you will take under consideration so that we can have a seat at the table and receive some of the. Monies that you're allocating to the rest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Let me profoundly thank. The members of the public for weighing in on this very important matter. I know, God, we had how many callers, Madam Clerk?
I think I lost track. We had over 60.
We had over 60.
I bet Jeff just loved the fact I was the last speaker.
Very good. Thank you. Heard from a lot of good, a lot of people. Very good. Let's turn it to the city council and again to members of the public. We're not taking a vote today. This is all. Initial input. Let me turn it to Mayor Protem Ashby. Councilmember Valenzuela, Councilmember Vang, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Geta.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. And it was really a lot of callers, but it was one of those. Items. It was really great to hear from so many different folks from around the city who are engaged in all different topics and areas and. Different, different groups. So I appreciated hearing from all them. Thanks to all of them who waited so long for the opportunity just to talk to us for a couple of minutes. I appreciate that. Mayor, I think you did a really good job starting this off. This is, it's hard to do. Because there are so many areas where you could spend money. Sometimes it's easier to not have money than it is to have money. You have to figure out where to send it. That being said, we're all better off that we have it. So thank you for taking the first swing, Mayor. And setting us up with some buckets to work from. Actually find that very helpful. It gives me a place to start from. I, I, I don't disagree with anything that you placed on there. I have a couple of questions for you and a couple of priority points. And then there are some things you asked us to weigh in on and I'd like to weigh in on a couple of them.
Okay.
First of all, I, this is more of a question to you, Mayor. I know there's. 8.2 million and then another 5 million for sort of central city stuff, which I think is great. I, I really think that's important. That's the business community and the downtown businesses. I just wanted to and midtown should include midtown, all central city, and I know it includes Old Sac too. I just wanted to make sure that that part of that would be. Infrastructure for things like sidewalks around the Alfresco Dining. And the open spaces like Chavez Plaza or the Yosefi Square. Because they're really relevant to COVID since we have pushed people outside to eat and outside to gather. And I, I just want to make sure that is that in your mind or those the kinds of things that would be included in that?
Yes, it could be, but one slight correction if I might be 8.2 and Vice Mayor Chenier, you can correct me on this, but the 8.2 is not limited to just the downtown and midtown. That is the sort of clean and safe bucket, if you will, for all the corridors. And so. If any corridor feels like they're being left out or left behind, there's the 8.2 million. There's the 7.3 million. There's the workforce development pot, which you know is competitive and discretionary. There's the creative economy pot. I mean, so the benefits will get to many neighborhoods and many corridors.
I, I think that's great and. There are lots of corners of our city that need funds, but the primary place that people gather outside is the central city. We know, we know that. So Caesar Chavez Plaza had a vaccination required event over the weekend. I only know because. I showed up to help turn off the sprinklers, but it was there. I think they had 5,000 vaccinated people there at a concert. So if we're gonna push people outdoors, I just want to make sure we're also. You know, making sure that the spaces are cleaned regularly, that the infrastructure is in place, but it sounds like that is your strategy. So I'm good with that, Mayor. My next question is actually for City Manager Chan. Howard, I know you have $25 million set aside in here for city staff. I just want to make sure I understand. Will that include. Parks maintenance and cleaning and and helping streamline some of the assistance in hiring right now? Because those are things that are like really important. I think citywide, all of our constituents are utilizing the parks at a high rate. And I want to make sure we're doing the best we can with maintenance and I don't know about the other districts, but. I know we're having trouble hiring for whatever reason. Will your money go towards this?
Well, there's some overlap between what Vice Merchantaire is talking about with the 8.2 million dollars to support. These, these corridors, but by and large, the $25 million set aside will go to scoring up all of our outstanding labor contracts. Adding FTEs in the Food Enforcement Police, Fire and Parks as well. So, so yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that parks, maintenance, cleaning and hiring in particular are included, City Manager, because. We have positions that are funded and available, but we're not hiring fast enough in some of them. So whatever needs to be done there. I, I think we need to take advantage of these resources for that.
Okay.
Okay. And then on the childcare, Mayor, I know you heard this and it's something you asked for input on. I, I think we all know that 1 million is not enough. You, you said that right off the bat. I don't know what the right amount would be, but I'm okay with starting with a million as long as we all sort of. Understand together that that's not ultimately going to be enough. Child Action is a fantastic partner. I love that they called in, you know, last time, Mayor, when you asked me when, when COVID first started and you, you asked me to set up the childcare program in 72 hours and we did it. Child Action was one of our big partners and one of the ways that they do things is they provide vouchers. They're a terrific partner for us to shortcut this. In other words, family members, for me, I use Child Action. You get to choose whatever childcare provider you want. I chose whatever was best for me and whatever neighborhood was best for me. But Child Action paid for the childcare. So if we partner with them, we'll be helping people all across the city. And like they said, if we work with the county, we can, we can double up that effort. So. I, I suggest we make them a lead partner on whatever we do with childcare at this point. And then, Mayor, I want, this question is for you. Can you, and I read your report, but I, and I know they're in there, but can you just tell me where the libraries fall? And specifically, I know you have digital equity in there, but literacy and reading and sort of addressing that gap are, that's in there, right? Or would that be under youth or?
It would be.
Call out our libraries?
Well, it would, could be under youth. It could also be revitalizing our commercial corridors. I look at the example of the, the North Sacramento Library, Del Paso Boulevard. I mean, so libraries could rightfully come under several categories.
Okay. When we drill down farther on this one, Mayor, like around youth in particular. I just don't like it when we make the libraries compete against the nonprofits. So when we drill down farther on youth, if we can do a set aside for the libraries that's specific. Whether it's on digital equity or literacy and closing that, that gap on literacy that kids are falling behind, that we specifically set aside money for them. We don't ask them. To compete in our P process since they are our entity. And more than four of us on this call have chaired that board. One of us is chairing it right now. Councilmember Guerra and Councilmember Jennings is in it. Councilmember Chenier has done it and I've done it and you know, it's really important. I'm sure you probably have too, Mayor Steinberg. It's important to us that we, you know, fund, fund the libraries like they're ours because they, they are. Or at least it is to me. And then, Mayor, what my, I want, I wanted to ask you, I know you had Fabrizio speak and I know because you told me. That you too want to center workers at the middle of this effort. Is his ask for Center for Workers' Rights included in your?
It is. In fact, their, their initial request was 150,000. I, I suggested 250 and Fabrizio. Said tonight that we ought to try to find a way to commit to multi-year funding, which again. You know, I'm open to all of it. It just want to make the numbers, the numbers work out.
That might be something we can drill down on later, but I just wanted to make sure. I do think it's really important that the Center for Workers' Rights has been answering the phones for people who've been. Laid off for the last 18 months and giving them guidance. So that's really important. And then I want to just shout out to everybody working on these digital equity, food equity, business, sports, small business and, and putting workers at the middle. It's just really great work, all of you. You're all, all of you are doing such amazing work on that. Mayor, I love that you put 10 million in here for the arts because what kind of city will we have? If at the end of COVID, we've lost all of our brilliant arts community. So I assume you'll include science and some of those museum type things in there too. And that's great. Good for you. That's so, so important. And then the $7 million in council priorities, I'm just going to tell my colleagues, like, I really believe that we should, you know. Actively pursue neighborhoods that really need the investment and. I think it would be a mistake if at the end of the day, we don't walk away here and, and give money to Northgate as well. Del Paso Boulevard needs the 5 million. I am more than happy to support that. I think we should put 5 million towards Northgate as well. Mayor Fargo is right. The problem with Northgate is, and this is everyone who's ever represented them has some ownership in this, including me. They don't have a P bid and, and they get left out all the time because of it. And so they don't have an organized, they have a neighborhood association. That's one of the best in the whole city. But they don't have a business district to fight for them, to call in, to gather their money, to pool their money. So. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to ask you to sharpen your pencil on that one a little bit. See if you can find 5 million in here somewhere for Northgate. And I think. That's it for me. I'm just, I'm really proud of the effort. Oh, the last thing is a thank you to you, Mayor. Thank you for including a million dollars for outreach and the ad campaign. I made that ask of you a couple of weeks. So it's the only thing I asked you to. Thank you for including a million dollars for outreach and the ad campaign. I made that ask of you a couple of weeks. So it's the only thing I asked you to put in here because I, I'm not ready to give up on educating people and giving them the opportunity to come and get this vaccination. And so you have my commitment. Karina and I are ready to push, Mayor. We've done a good job up in our neck of the woods vaccinating now almost forty thousand people. And our, our numbers are really good in our zip codes and we're ready to do multi-language outreach and, uh, and help this city push forward. I'm gonna need every council member's help to do that. So thank, thank you, Mayor, for including that. Really proud, uh, to be on the council tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Thank you. Good, all good suggestions. Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to echo my appreciation for the thoroughness of this list. There are several things on here that made me really excited. I'm glad we're already starting to do funding of the comprehensive siting plan, which we just voted on. The one point five million for youth violence prevention, you know, we had asked for maybe us to consider five hundred thousand after the incidents in Old Sac. You blew it out of the water. I really appreciate that. We need it everywhere, not just in Old Sac. So that money will be well spent. Um, thirty million for the businesses, including five million for Old Sac. They've had stuff I've learned in recent weeks that have been on our to-do list literally for years that are gonna be able to get taken care of here. They're one of our largest and only really outdoor venues that's been open this whole time. Um, and they really need some love. And I appreciate that you put that in there. Thank you again for the Center for Workers' Rights funding, um, Critical. They've, they've answered ten thousand calls just in the last few months. I mean, there's clearly a huge need for that to be continued, um, as well as the arts funding, particularly the funding for Latino Center for Arts and Culture. And we know that there's a lot of conversations going on about how to increase equity and capacity and make sure we're representative in the arts. And I really, really appreciate all of that. Um, you know, I want to note that, uh, you know, we did hear a long presentation from the business community a few weeks ago, which was really important because we need to know what they need, um, for success. And I'm glad that that's in here. And I'm also glad that we gave Fabrizio time to hear from the Central Labor Council because I would argue that it's equally, if not more important for us to know what the workers need, um, to return to work so that the businesses can be successful. So thank you for giving him that space at the beginning of the meeting. And I'd like to say that I support his request for the childcare funding, for transportation, for worker supports, um, you know, and I would argue that maybe that be also considered under the seven point three million, um, for council initiatives for economic development because as I said, businesses are only gonna be successful if the workers are successful. And I think that the outline he gave us really gives us a good footprint to consider for that remaining, um, several million dollars and leave room to spare for all the other great ideas. I'm sure my colleagues will, will bring forward. Um. I also want to express my enthusiasm for Councilmember Vang's, um, health, healthy food initiative and the work and the task force that she's convened. I was getting a lot of letters today, as I'm sure you all were, from stakeholders that I've had the honor of knowing for years, way back when we were doing urban agriculture and planting gardens, and they do amazing work. And one thing we all have in common, as I was saying to Councilwoman Lowey today at the River City Food Bank event, is that we all eat. And then that we all need to eat, we all need food. And, and what this crisis really exposed was that need that was always there, um, that became so much more dire during the pandemic. And I really think that in addition to addressing that dire need, we have a real opportunity to also really recover well, um, by investing in these strategies and these initiatives. Um, so I want to support not just the one million in here, but I know some of them are asking for more money, um, and express my support for for that, um, potentially to be considered under council initiatives as well. But all that said, um, really appreciate all the work and that you put into this and looking forward to all the discussions that are going to come from the community in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Valenzuela, for your in, very important input. Uh, Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, I have lots of, lots of thoughts on your proposal, but first I want to say thank you, uh, to all of the residents and community organization, all the advocates who called in today to make your voice heard. Mayor, uh, definitely want to echo my colleagues and say thank you to you and your team for your incredible work to put this proposal together. Uh, Team Hart Huxall also conducted our own survey as well, our own COVID recovery survey. Um, and when asked, you know, what would be your top priority in terms of ARP, uh, investment? Housing homelessness, health and food insecurity was among the top four priorities in terms of investment. And your proposal actually was in perfect alignment, almost perfect alignment, uh, with, uh, the survey results. So I want to say um, thank you just to, to you and your team. Um, and, uh, again, I also I want to say thank you to you, Mayor, for making food justice, uh, a priority for the city of Sacramento. I think we, all of us uh, know that COVID nineteen made clear that the food system we have right now is not working for all of Sacramento. And based on lessons learned over the past year and a half, uh, this is truly an opportunity for us as a city uh, to really change the trajectory of our food system, uh, in the city. Um, and when we talk about food justice, I want to be clear that, that, that also means racial and economic ju- justice, right? That we're gonna take a holistic structural view of our food system and, and see healthy food as a human right. Um, and our responsibility to address structural barriers to that right. Um, I truly believe that the hundred and twelve million dollars, uh, is a critical down payment on how we are gonna, um, recover from this pandemic. And really, this is an opportunity for all of us to redesign our system and how, uh, how the system has been working for our communities. Um, for each of the five categories, Mayor, that you laid out, um, I just have some, some direction and some comments, uh, in particular around equity. Um, one, I think, um, and, and among the five categories that you laid out, which was great, um, I think it's incredibly important that we explicitly, uh, name racial equity as a goal with, with specific targets to produce in each of the five areas. Um, as, uh, Ami Barnes, um, our diversity and equity manager shared in previous presentation, and as we heard from advocates, that the city must lead with race, um, and we are to make equity a priority. Um, we know that racism is deeply embedded in all of our institutions. Um, that actually leads to all the inequities, um, across major indicators and success of wellness. And so my direction would be really um, figuring out what does that, what does that wind look like for each of these five categories? We say the word racial equity a lot, but it is a moral imperative and we have to make sure that we can track it. So my first kind of direction, it's also a question too for uh, the city managers that, you know, we've heard over and over, even from the public comments, that we gotta, you know, um, center those hardest hit, stabilize the hardest hit workers, businesses, neighborhoods, um, to really advance racial equity. Um, and I wanted to ask, um, you know, and you might, you might not be able to answer this now, but I think as we're developing this plan, I would suggest that we actually have some racial equity targets for each of these areas and initiative. Um, specifically, um, I think it's gonna be really critical that we are able to track and just track this aggregated data to ensure accountability to equity goals, right? It's really great when after the dollars, we, we just show, oh, these dollars were spent on this community, whatnot. But I think it's important for us to be able actually to track how we're doing while we're doing it, um, so that we can actually pivot as needed. So that's gonna be really important. I think SAC IDC is one, a great example of a grassroots efforts to reach local minority businesses and aging corridors. But I think about our funding for the arts, ten million, I think that's amazing. Youth programming, other initiative, right? But what processes have we built um, in place from our CARES Act, um, to actually, um, assess the efficacy uh, of our projects and strategy. And so that's my first question to you, to Mayor and also to, uh, manager, to City Manager Howard, because I think that's gonna be really important, is making sure that at a city level, we actually have the capacity to do that data collection and to actually monitor if we're really being equitable, um, and are the outcomes, the outcomes we want to see. So that's my first question.
Oh, for me, first off, we, we do have, uh, a report, uh, back. I think Vice Mayor Cheniere had asked for this. Lessons learned from CRF, the CARES Act funding, you know, how that was disseminated, what we could do better, uh, data tracking that you talked about, uh, Councilmember Vang. So that information is forthcoming to the Mayor Council uh, as, as a basis for having this conversation. The second one, uh, which is probably more important, it's, we've talked about this in open session for about three or four times. I think the clarity that we seek from, uh, from the staff level is uh, from the Mayor and Council about what you all see as racial equity, what you see as targets, how you would like us to kind of carve up, uh, these dollars using that lens, uh, and, and just be a, a lot more, uh, descriptive about what your targets are because, uh, we will take that and come up with a spending plan on this expenditure, taking into account everything that you've shared here today as a council, and then, uh, come back for action and, and deliver.
Thanks, Howard. I, I really appreciate that. And I know that, you know, we're working on our racial equity initiative framework, um, and that, that work is really gonna lead us in terms of getting there. Um, so I, I appreciate that. And it sounds like the council does have to provide more clarity on those targets. And I think that's upon all of us to actually, uh, figure out what those targets are because what I don't want to happen is, obviously, we know the great community organizations that are gonna be intentional about outreach that's gonna reach our Black, our Latino, our Southeast Asian, our Indigenous communities. But until we can actually monitor and to make sure that that's really happening, I think for me, I, I have a concern to make sure that are we doing the best that we can with the dollars that we have? And so, you know, we, I know that we have a lot of work ahead in terms of our racial equity initiative work. Um, and looking forward to working with my colleagues on figuring out what that framework is so that we can move forward, not just on the ARP dollars, but on all budgeting items. I think that's absolutely really critical. Um, the second, the second piece I wanted to talk about was just around civic infrastructure and capacity to ensure reach, goes back to equity. Um, I kind of want to know, I, and I think it's kind of spelled out throughout the mayor's proposal, but about the type of direct investment. Um, so that includes direct financial support to help build capacity for community organization and grassroots organization um, to help with COVID recovery. Because at the end of the day, it, we're partnering with CDOs actually to do this work and just wanted to know um, what type of civic infrastructure and capacity are we investing in, um, aside from just the city? But I want to know in terms of our partners.
Was that directed towards me or the mayor? I'm, I'm gonna defer to the mayor on, on that piece as this is.
I'm sorry, man. I, I got distracted for a moment. Uh, the question again, please.
Oh, Mayor, I was just asking, you know, throughout your proposal, right? I wanted to know what type of direct financial support we're providing uh, to community-based organization and grassroots organization to actually help with the COVID recovery outreach. I think there are components in each of the five areas, but I didn't see it kind of throughout and just wanted to know what your thought process was for the, your proposal in terms of, um, supporting community-based organization grassroots to actually do this COVID recovery outreach work.
I mean, I think, I don't want to say virtually all, but maybe close to virtually all of these categories require the leadership and involvement of our community-based organizations. Uh, eh, they just do when you look, look through it. I mean, take, take the housing and homeless issue. We're gonna be working with the nonprofit, uh, providers who help do this work on workforce for the, the, the same thing, on the creative economy. All, all of these categories are gonna require, um, the active involvement and leadership of our, of our CBOs. Eh, eh, even the IEDC in, uh, proposed investment. I mean, that is directly investing in our P bids in our chambers so that they can be the frontline with our struggling businesses.
Yeah. So I, I have, um, so I have two requests. One, and Howard, you may have already thought through this with the twenty one million. Uh, but during CARES Act, before I was a council member, uh, the former council member, Councilmember Larry Carr made a request to set aside about five hundred thousand dollars of CARES dollar, uh, to actually support staff in terms of city outreach and engagement efforts. Um, and I want to make sure that, you know, the infrastructure that, that staff has built, um, is actually funded, um, in terms of our efforts on all recovery, right? Not just business, but our youth, programming, whatnot. Um, and I know that we have a kind of a civic infrastructure now, but it needs to be funded to support it. I don't know if you already have it within your city manager budget uh, to ensure that we have around five hundred thousand dollars also as we move forward with these ARP dollars. But wanted to make that request. I don't know if it's already in the budget or if it's something that we have to set aside specifically because I know we did that with CARES Dollar and wanted to, to make that ask.
No, I, I really appreciate the comment because as part of that twenty five million dollars does include, uh, in fact, supporting the disbursement of the ARP dollars. Well, we, we had a hybrid with CARES Act. We kind of did it off the, kind of like quote unquote overtime from staff or other duties as a sign, but it's, uh, it's not sustainable to do it that way. So as part of ARP going forward, we are setting aside some dollars to do that, just that.
Okay. And do you know what that amount is?
Well, I, it could be a half a million dollars. It could be more. It just depends. Like, like the memo that we're sending out to the Mayor Council is gonna suggest that, uh, we don't do dispersments of, you know, ten thousand dollar contracts each where instead, we're gonna recommend a different approach that would make dispersment a lot more, uh, efficient.
Okay.
So, uh, more, more to come on that. This is the initial, uh, look at the, the mayor's plan. Uh, our goal is to get the feedback from the council and refine it, bring it back. We might have to come back maybe a couple of times. You know, understanding that, uh, the, the final, um, rule from federal government is not expected for another at least sixty days. So all this is predicated on eligibility requirements to get finalized in that rule.
That sounds great, Howard. I really appreciate that. And I just want to reemphasize that. Really great to hear that it's gonna be part of, you know, the, the timeline and the work that you're, um, gonna be putting together when we think about resources for staff. So I really appreciate that. Um, just one more item, Mayor, and I'll be done. Um, I just wanted to add, you know, last year before, um, I came on council, the city, uh, began its uh, kind of embarked on its first journey on an over, overdue, long overdue initiative to establish our framework, right? And as I'm asking the question, I think Howard is absolutely right. He throws it back, back to us, right? That he needs direction from this council on racial equity and targets. But one way that we can get there is actually making sure we move forward with this work. Um, and our staff is working with Race Forward as a consultant, uh, in the upcoming months up to bring together community stakeholders from across the city. Um, I truly believe we have to make sure that we have investments on ensuring that we have deeper community engagement, um, to really address some of the inequities and structural harms. The community will be guiding us and informing us in terms of how this racial equity framework should be built. It should be led by them. Uh, but what I've also learned very quickly is that, um, in the upcoming months, uh, when we do this work, it's gonna be our trusted messengers and our community partners that are begin, that, that's gonna be critical in leading and facilitating these conversations to deliver feedback to the full council and shaping and influencing our racial equity resolution and framework, um, that will guide the city. And so I want to make a request, um, that as staff moves forward on this racial equity work, it's so important. When I think about recovery, right? At the end of the day, it is our low-income minorities that's bearing the brunt of all of the devastating impact. And we really, we've been talking a lot about racial equity, but we gotta get going on this work. And I think one way to do this, and I'm going to make this request, is to really recommend that we set aside funding. Um, if, if that's two hundred and fifty for the first round and two fifty for the next round, to actually engage in meaningful, um, uh, engagement to ensure community buy-in, uh, to support our racial equity because they're gonna be the one leading the work, but we gotta make sure that we compensate them for their time and their effort. Um, and so that would be my additional request. I know this is just the beginning, uh, but want to make that request as well that we could fit that into, um, the proposal.
So let me, I, I just want to address the racial equity issue for a moment because it's obviously really, really vital. And here's a hundred and twelve million dollars. This is our opportunity and obligation to, um, to provide some sort of racial equity and gender equity lens to what we do here. Here's the conundrum that we have to figure out together. We are embarked under the leadership of Ami Barnes. I know Kelly Rivas, my chief staff's involved, Councilmember Vang, you're very involved, others as well. On a twelve to twenty-four month process to develop a comprehensive racial, gender, LGBTQ equity lens and program that is, that is sophisticated in the sense that it, it contrasts whatever we're taking up, whether it's a budget or a policy decision with what the city has done in the past. And so, you know, we are embarking on a process to do this right. We're about to final our contract with with Race Forward to do that work. So the challenge here, and you, you're absolutely right, is that we're obviously going to get at this hundred and twelve million dollars much faster than twelve months or twenty-four months. So how do we take what we have learned already, what we know, and how do we plot, apply a racial equity, racial and gender, excuse me, equity lens to this hundred and twelve million dollars before we finish uh, that work with Race Forward? And so let's, we don't have to answer that here today, but you're right to raise it. And, uh, we've got to figure this out together. We do have this ad hoc, um, that I'm on, I guess. I, I forgot that I appointed myself along with, uh, you and, uh, Vice Mayor Cheniere and Councilmember Getta, I believe. And why don't we tee this subject up for our discussion so that we can, can do something significant as applied to this hundred and twelve million dollars, even if it isn't the, the, the complete work that we intend to do. Fair?
Sounds like a good start, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Vang. Okay, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I agree with my colleagues that I, I think you've given us a great start at a strong framework for the ARPA funding. You know, this, this money, a hundred and twelve million dollars, it's, it's a lot of money, but it's not enough to solve all the issues that we have in this city. So of course, it's a balancing act, and I appreciate the comments of my colleagues about this stuff. First thing I'd like to say is I really support the business investment. If we don't revitalize our core, our economic engine will frankly, it will falter and our tax base will go away and one-time funding will quickly run out. We really need to revitalize our core. We, we can do a lot with the money that's allocated here. Clean and safe, of course, is very important. And also, thank you, Jay, for doing, uh, those meetings. I, I did appreciate them. And I think they were a great sounding board for the business. uh, those meetings. I, I did appreciate them and I think they were a great sounding board for the business community. Uh, there are many projects that we can affect in the core. A lot of it has to do with just being presentable, so our hospitality industry can thrive. And uh, you know, that in conjunction with the money that we're going to spend on the, the master sighting plan or the comprehensive sighting plan uh, will work out really well. You know, but uh, you know, clean and safe is a big deal all over the city. And it's involved in a couple of different uh buckets of money here. So I'm glad to see that. I personally think it's going to take at least ten million dollars in the next year to make a significant cleanup effort in our city. And I hope that this council will use the money wisely to, to do exactly that. I actually agree with almost all of the spending here. There's one, one area where I have a concern. Uh, and, and that is on the council-led strategic initiatives at seven point three million. You know, there are an awful lot of needs, as we've heard from the public testimony, for corridors. And you know, the mayor uh specified five million dollars from North Sacramento. Yeah, again, I don't have a problem with that, but the, there is a problem with that actually that, you know, when I look at Del Paso over the last two decades, I can count to twenty million dollars of investment very quickly. North Gate, which has very similar economic conditions, is a longer corridor. Del Paso is one point eight miles, North Gate is two point three miles. And the amount of investment in North Gate over the last two, almost three decades is four million dollars. Two that I got uh, yeah, out of Measure U funds and two that Ray Trethewey used to build a teen center at Stanford Settlement. The amount of infrastructure that is needed on that corridor is very dramatic. And uh, you know, they need a facelift. There were many things that have happened in North SAC that have not happened on North Gate, but certainly I think that this is a very much a left behind community. I would certainly support five million dollars for North Gate. Barring that, Mr. Mayor, I would say this. It would be my suggestion that instead of putting five million dollars specifically towards North SAC, that you put that five million into the council-led strategic initiatives and put uh, Del Paso in there as well. You, you know, look, South Stockton needs a lot of works. South Franklin needs work. There are parts of Mac that need work. Virtually every corridor in our city needs a lot of attention. And I think it would be more equitable frankly, if all the corridors were treated uh in this manner that each, each corridor comes up with with projects that need to be affected and then we vie for that money equally. Uh, if, if we don't go that route, I would certainly advocate for five million dollars for North Gate. It's long overdue. There's been so little investment there. Um, you know, North Gate does not have a P bid and, and what Councilmember Ashby said is true, but the IEDC is starting to level that playing field. I know that Kathy Gómez is, is, is working on the IEDC to help represent North Gate. And of course, Gardenlands North Gate Neighborhood Association has Marvea Sala on the Measure U Committee. So there are people there who can help steer the investments that will be very good for North Gate. And I'm, I'm really uh proud about that. So I'm not quite so worried about the lack of a P bid. There are local leaders who can, who can uh carry the water there. One thing that I'm concerned about is food insecurity. I was just at the River City Food Bank today. You know, uh, the North Gate community in South Latoma, Skarland, we invested many thousands of dollars uh with the discretionary funds we got from the CARES Act in my district to help people with food insecurity. And I would like to see a million dollars of the ARPA funds directly go into our food banks to, to meet this immediate need. We are probably going to be the recipient of a number of Afghan refugees. As, as most of you know, Sacramento County has more Afghan refugees than any other county in the country. Because of those connections, I would assume, and I think it's probably going to be true, that we will welcome more of these refugees. And so food insecurity is something that's very much on my mind. Um, you know, other than that, Mayor, I, I have to tell you, I think you did a great job here. And, and kudos to Scott White, because I know that, you know, he worked with you a lot on this, that you bounced a lot of ideas off of each other. Uh, you know, overall, I don't find fault with the plan. But with the exception of, of, you know, my worry about a bucket of money for council-led strategic initiatives being perhaps meager and, and working on food insecurity, I think you did a really fine job.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Harris. Yep, not, nothing's perfect, as we all know. But I, I do appreciate it very much.
It's a balancing act, you know? Like I said, this can't meet every need. So how do we get the best bang for the buck? Well, we put our heads together, but you, you, you gave us a really solid framework here.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Council, Councilman Geta.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and I'll, I'll start with that, with the, the accolades here, uh, because you know, this framework is very strong. And uh, and if you think about our city, which is the sixth largest, almost fifth largest city in the state of California, over half a million people, extremely diverse. There's no one area in our city that is like another. The challenge to put something like this is, is tremendous. So I, I do give a lot of credit to your staff and to all of the community partners who uh, you know, uh, gave input and logged your office and tried to get there. I know there was the uh, press conference outside of, of, of the city hall yesterday that was advocating. So I, I think there's, there's a lot of credit that goes to that, which uh, is why we had so much public comment on a two o'clock meeting. Uh, and that, that goes to show the need. Um, but, and, and the bigger piece here is if, if our city is going to survive and thrive out of this pandemic equitably, um, then it really has to focus on families and workers in our local businesses who are struggling. And I, I personally had a lot of individual family members, local business owners who have told me that they fear that, you know, that this Delta Plus variant and the effects on the economy could jeopardize where they don't know if they're going to be able to have a job later or their business is going to survive. You know, some of them, uh, some of our businesses didn't make it out of the, the, the last uh shutdown. And uh, and now we're, we're, you know, in this current effort with Delta Plus, I think uh, you know, whatever we can do to focus on our workers and upscaling our workers for higher wage jobs uh, and helping our businesses become more resilient is going to be the pathway for us to survive. Yes, we have immediate needs that we need to fund. Uh, food access, I think, you know, the work that Councilmember Vang is doing is, is tremendous. I, I do want to thank our partners from um, Asian Resources, La Familia, our food banks, and then our, our farmers from across the river and the farm workers from across the river. I know many from KP Valley or Organic were helping provide uh thousands of food boxes every week because of that. We know that that's an issue. And then the need for rental assistance. But if we don't address the economic needs of making sure that we're using this very unique tremendous amount of money to upscale our workers and get them into higher wage jobs uh and getting our businesses to become resilient, uh, we're, we're never going to get out of this uh, this uh, the situation. So we were presented with a very unique opportunity and I do want to thank SAC IEDC for their very modest proposal, I will say, uh, given the amount of, of folks who are involved in this. And whether it's been from the Franklin P bid, the Stockton P bid, the McRoe P bid, they have all been in unison about the support for the commercial corridors, including um, many times I've heard them specifically call out um, North Gate Boulevard and also the needs in the north area uh, Del Paso and the challenges that they face, particularly North Gate, even though they don't have a P bid. Um, you know, the, the fact that SAC IEDC has brought that up, I think is important that all of our city commercial corridors are pulling together. Um, I, uh, one of the proposals, aspects of that proposal is that they have uh specific staff people that are going to be assigned to corridors regardless if there's a P bid there or not. Uh, which areas like Folsom Boulevard that don't have P bid or North Gate are going to benefit from. So I think that it was a very well thought out uh proposal that SAC IEDC proposed and even one that we should look at uh, how we enhance in that aspect. Um, there's no question um that North, uh, North Gate and Gardenland need support. And there's no question that North SAC and Del Paso uh need support. Uh, and so I, I would also say that whatever we can do to help that area, unfortunately, in the last ten year, ten years ago, it was gerrymandered and cut into two pieces when I think four of the five maps recommended that those communities be linked in a council district because they, they share the same issues. They share the same economic issue. They share, shares diversity issue, the, the, the same diversity and their quality issues. This council in the, in the spring supported funding for air monitors that are going to support, that are going to be um, uh, out for North Gate and Gardenland. And also we have air monitors already being issued out in Del Paso and North SAC. They have the same issue. So I think everything we can do to support North Gate and Gardenland, uh, I think is critical. But to the Jeff's point, the Councilmember Harris's point, every commercial corridor, I think, is struggling. So the more we do to help uh strengthen those commercial corridors, the better our city will be. Now on the worker side, we have a huge opportunity with construction, with allied health and manufacturing. Those are high-wage jobs. This is an opportunity for us to help upscale our workers and get them into high-wage, high-paying jobs with pathways and jobs that don't require an immediate four-year degree. We have a two-year window with this, these dollars. And so uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you for focusing on, on the need for that uh, and making sure that we're looking at uh, at programs that are looking at uh, manufacturing, including that match our environmental goals, like zero emission vehicle construction. I think those are, those are critical. Uh, but to take advantage of those workforce programs to get to work and even for business owners, there has been a huge gap in childcare. And so I want to make sure that one, I know, Mr. City Manager, we're in the second interviews of, of hiring our childcare manager. We need to get that done and moving forward. Uh, and that the childcare manager in the city work with, uh, we've had, we have a stakeholder group that we put together with uh, not only Child Action, First Five, our county office of that, uh, and also our worker. And we've reached out to um, our local uh, uh, workers, uh, Union of Childcare Operators uh, to be able to get a, a better strategy of how to use that dollars. This year also, the state legislature uh has allocated probably the largest amount of money for support for childcare. So making sure that we use our city money wisely in partnership with the state is going to be critical. Uh, I think Council, I've been Assemblymember McCarty and Senator Levo were both instrumental in making sure that there is this huge amount of resource from the state. Uh, other cities will use it if we don't take advantage of it. So I think the sooner we develop this cohesive plan, the better. Um, lastly, I'll just say that, you know, uh, this funding, the equity work the Councilmember Vang mentioned is critical. Because organizations like the, the Latino Economic Council have been doing it on their own, trying to organize communities, getting all the arts organizations, getting all of the, the, uh, our diverse neighborhoods and communities together uh, to be able to provide direction to us and how to fund it. But we need to be able to support that, that equity work so that it's not forgotten if a community doesn't have the resources. So I'll support that effort. Again, I think focusing back on how do we strengthen our economic factors of our city, which is upskilling our workers and making sure that they become into a state, a position of financial stability and supporting our small businesses who uh are also are in our neighborhood supporters and members is going to be the move forward. Uh, great work again, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor on these efforts, uh, because I think it is a very well-rounded, uh, strong um, uh, proposal.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Geta. I, I just want to mention real quickly on the issue of racial equity. Uh, we've talked a lot about it. Absolutely. I also want to just throw in that racial equity includes climate equity as well. When you think about environmental justice, it's not that we need, you know, a formal filter, whatever, but I hope that as many of these investments as possible are, are, are part of our clean energy agenda and our climate agenda, the mobility center being a great example. Um, and, and that the workforce programs are focused on, on climate. Just want to add that. Okay.
Completely concur.
Right on. Councilmember Lalo, where are you on these questions?
Thank you very much. I didn't know it was my turn. My apologies. Um, first of all, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Um, you, you definitely uh, did sharpen your pencil and looking at how you divvied up the, the, this um, ARP. Um, it's, I mean, I've reviewed it uh, uh, in and out and I'm, I've tried to find things that I could question about, but um, I really couldn't. So I want to thank you uh for that. And I also want to thank um all the residents and advocates that called in with their, their great comments and, and responses. Um, I think that the fact that your number one agenda was um to, to the support of small businesses, that, that's a strong message out there because our city is run by the small businesses and without them, there will be uh, no, no, no Sacramento. Um, with, with that said, um, I do also want to just as far as the, the, the general process, just have some this, uh, some comments to make that. Um, I want to make sure that, you know, I think we all fundamentally agree on the workforce. But maybe we have different um, um ideologies that, as it relates to measuring results and what economic equity looks like. So I just want us to like make sure that we're concentrating on that a little bit. Um, I'm, I am still, you know, new to work, but many organizations that have reached out to me this week as it relates to requests of these ARP dollars. Um, it was just brought to my attention that about a thousand public comment cards were received yesterday and today from Latino Economic Council of Sacramento. Um, so I, I think this is a, 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 a great move uh, moving forward. Um, but I want to make sure that whatever we do, that it's extremely transparent. And to make sure that the public knows exactly um how this money is being spent. And, and work closely uh with uh, uh, the, the different CBOs and, and get the data and the metric so we can, we can kind of keep an eye on the progress that's being made. Um, and how the, this, um, the, the fundings are being uh, applied. I also think that when we talk about the labor force, um, I, I understand there, there's that, there's, you know, one entity that pushes labor. But I think it's also important to reach out to a much broader format of the, the labor force and see what's really needed. I think the childcare, I do agree, it's on top of that line. Um, I also want to um, thank you for the, the five million for North SAC. And, and reach out to my colleague, uh, Councilmember Harris and, and do agree with him about the North Gate corridor and other business corridors. But my approach would be a little bit different. Rather than saying, take away, give it here, I think my approach would be what can we do to bring funding, additional funding to the North Gate uh corridors and other corridors? Um, and, and being unified on the fact that there's definitely money needed for some of these corridors. You know, Marysville Boulevard corridor does not have a P bid. You know, it is, it is an association, you know? So um, I would just simply ask all of my colleagues that let's work together and find the fun, uh, funding for all of the corridors versus let's take away the money from this quarter that's been hit extremely hard through many, many years. Uh, especially last year because of the COVID, how numerous businesses have closed down. And unfortunately that they have not been able to open up. And we do need this facelift on a Del Paso Boulevard or a Marysville Boulevard to just bring some attention. And with the hope that we can also find additional funding for North Gate and Mc Road. Um, and work together as a team to bring funding to all of these uh, much-needed areas versus taking funding from one, one much-needed area and bring it to another. So um, I think to work as a team and, and for it being unified, uh, that definitely would help. And, and, and as I said, um, great job, Mr. Mayor. Um, you're true to your words from the first day that I have met you, where you've said, don't worry about it. We can find money. Money will come. And, and this is uh, uh, truly, uh, you, you definitely can read the future because none of us knew that ARP is coming in, but obviously you did. And the fact that you're even committing to more money next year, it tells us that, that Sacramento is going to get back on track. So. So thank you very much uh to you and all the staff. And and thank you very much to all my colleagues with their comments. Again, being a freshman on on this. Um, I've learned a lot from some of the feedbacks, especially, you know, in a colleague such as um Council Member Ashby, Councilmember Mayor, uh, Member, uh, my Vang, uh, Gera and um all of you. So i- it's great. I'm excited. Tell me where I can sign up. Um, I was at a at um River City Food Bank today. And uh, Councilmember uh Val as well had a great comment for me and she said, you're a great sales rep. So sign me up. Where do I need to go to talk to to the public? Who do I need to talk to so we can spend this money wisely so our entire city can benefit of it? And Mayor, thank you so much for putting the El Paso Boulevard and Marysville Boulevard corridor on the map and how much it's needed for us to invest money in that quarter. I appreciate your commitment to District God too. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lolo. All right, uh, Vice President Chenier, I think is one of the callers.
Thank you, Mr. Appreciate that. Um, so thanks. Uh, I I think you did a great job. You know, as many of my colleagues have said, it's a balancing act. Uh, we could have easily been talking about how to spend three or four hundred million and still would have needed more. So, you know, as as Mr. Harris said, one hundred and twelve million sounds like a lot of money, but we can go pretty quickly. And we need to be smart about how we use it. Um, I have a couple of comments on process, uh, and then a few comments on on content. So, but I don't think uh I should take that long. I know we have a another council meeting starting thirty six minutes ago. I I want to lead with, I want to talk a little bit, and this is a question for the city manager. Um, I think I I was hoping that we would do the lessons learned discussion prior to getting to this aspect of of where we are. So, you know, and 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 I I think this is a two part question, Howard. One, for where we are on the lessons learned and how you see that coming to council. And then Daryl, um, thinking about kind of what are the next steps after tonight? How do you envision that rolling out and how those decisions will be made? And and I think Sean was really important, talking about um being totally transparent about where we are and how we're doing this. So if I could get those two questions to start.
So first off, on the lessons learned, you'll have something this week in your inbox. And we can have a, we can decide how we want to bring it back to the council for a a broader discussion. But I wanted the council to have this discussion first initially before having, uh, you know, the 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 staff recommendations on how we might do things a little bit better this time. Understanding that CRF and A R P are a little bit different. And in some ways, uh, it's it's going to be a little bit more um efficient. In other ways, uh, it won't be. So I mean, uh, so you you'll, we have a memo drafted for the mayor council that you will receive this week. And I I could work with the mayor and figure out how we could agendize this to to have a more public discussion. But you will have that information as we take in all the feedback tonight and come back uh with something for the council to react to, incorporating the comments tonight.
Okay. Well, I think it's really important. I was happy to hear that part of what you're thinking about on the twenty five million is building infrastructure. Cause clearly we didn't have enough last time around and it really forced people to do more than they should have been asked to do. I mean, I think our staffs did a great job uh in getting the the dollars out as quickly as we did and being smart about it. But I think that we can do better and have people, you know, hopefully live a normal life while they're doing this. Um, I by building up the infrastructure within the city. And and what we build as we know and as we do more and more work with our community based organizations becomes even more important in how we get grants out and how we monitor them.
Well, and also we have a little bit longer runway on the backend in terms of the spend down. Uh, as opposed to CRF, it was a very short fuse. Everybody was forced to uh try and fit a square peg in a round hole, given those restrictions. So this, this, that's what I mean about A R P this time around. They've taken, the federal government has taken a lot of our feedback from not just Sacramento, all the local agencies, all the recipients of CRF. I mean, we're we're just getting better at it. So.
Okay, no, that's great. And then, I don't know, Howard, if this is for you or the mayor, but how do you, how do you see taking what you've learned tonight? And I know I have a couple of comments and I see Mr. Jennings does as well, but taking what you learned tonight and coming back, and when will that be? And and is it going to be another round of sixty people calling up or, you know, and doing two minutes each? Or are there other ways that we can try to get this information out um and get feedback on it?
I I think there's a couple of critical path items here that, uh, uh, you know, one of them is the racial equity piece, of course. Uh, we're not going to be able to come back with a a set of recommendations until we kind of figure out how that plays into it. But I'll I'll defer to the mayor on how he envisions this to come back. And obviously, we're going to work in partnership to do that along with the rest of the council. Uh, but I'm open. I mean, tonight was just for staff to hear where the council's at. Uh, and to get a little bit of direction on how we could fine tune uh this expenditure plan over the next couple of years.
So, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Cut, just a couple of thoughts. And again, I'm wide open and I think this is something we should talk about iteratively process wise over the next week or two. Um, I would like to see the council vote as early as as early as the fourteenth of September, if that is possible. Uh, we don't have a meeting next week. The seventh is the Jewish New Year, Rosh Hashanah. The fourteenth is uh our next meeting, as early as the fourteenth on the framework as revised. Because I'm taking in a lot of input here uh tonight myself and listening. And there's a lot to consider in terms of what uh what what we have heard tonight. Um, I I think it would be important for the community that we set that clear direction here as a full city council. The the balance, of course, and this is always the way it is with um government, city government, is the balance between transparency, competitiveness and urgency. For example, on the eight point two million dollars, Vice Mayor, which you led on, the business corridors are rightfully anxious to get as much of that money, you know, on the ground, on the street, so to speak, as possible and as quickly as possible. Uh, and yet, we've got a number of corridors covered and uh and so that's one set of questions. There are some of the pots in here, if they hold, that by definition are going to be competitive and are going to require some form of request for proposal and competitive evaluation by the staff. Ultimately, to be decided by the elected officials, the nine members of the city council. So I do think maybe what we can do, Mr. City Manager, over the next week or so is refine a little bit of what I said and what you said and come back through memorandum. If you will, suggesting a a little bit more detail about about that process. But I would love us to at least make the fundamental decision about categories and specific uh sub pot, so to speak, within the categories um as early as the fourteenth. And if that doesn't uh uh, if that doesn't prove to be doable, you know, um, then of course we'll we'll adjust. That's my thought.
That works for me.
Okay, so I a couple of comments on the framework then, um, that we'll get to. And and I want to talk for a second about the eight point two million as well. On on the framework, um, and you know, I I don't know, you you can go on and on and on about where to stop and where to start on having five buckets, six, it's eight buckets, however you want to do that. You know, Mayor, you you started out tonight by talking about public safety as a core priority of the city, which I agree with. And want to, you know, come back to the fact that the council unanimously passed the resolution defining public safety and including prevention programs for young people. I would love to see us pull out the youth component of this just into its own bucket. I'm not asking for more dollars, but I think understanding exact and being transparent about how much of those funds are going to youth programming or partially going to youth programming is important. So my request would be that you create that bucket um so that we have a a clear understanding. Uh, I'm excited about the state seven million dollars. I think it it makes it a little bit easier because you're going to get to where we were last year um without using all art money. So that does well, and I'm happy to throw that into the bucket as well as a as a footnote. Um, because I do want, and I've had this discussion with a lot of youth advocates. I do want them to understand that the color money doesn't matter here. We're putting in the same amount of dollars to do the youth workforce as well. So that would be a a request and you guys can figure out what.
Okay, we'll work on it.
Um, on on the eight point two million, uh, again, I want to remind the council, the this was a hundred percent business community. And we invited and had over a hundred different business folks attend the sessions. This was their request. It was not ours. They prioritized it. Um, and and what the city did was put the dollars to it. So I'm hoping, and and obviously we had a a good session on it when Scott Syfax came and walked through it all with the council. And then a little bit uh tonight as well. It's not going to be all things to all people, but I'd love to see if we can pull that out and get, as the mayor said, there are a lot of the corridor people. And this was around the city. It wasn't just downtown who participated. Um, I'd love to see if we could get that going. So I I'd love to recommend that we pull that out and bring it as near as as soon as next week back to the council for a vote on that. Um, again, hundred percent recommendations of the business community.
Vice Mayor, we we could, uh, if it's the will of the council, we uh we don't have a meeting uh for the next two weeks, actually.
Okay, whenever our next meeting is.
Yeah, the the eight point two million, there was a lot of overlap based on what what staff was recommending for clean and safe. Dining and the like. So, yeah, I I I agree with that.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's a statement, part of what we were trying to do in the convenings was build trust with the business community. And I think it'd be a strong statement from this council to say, this is what you asked for. We're going to go ahead and vote on it and and move it forward. So if we can do that, that would be great.
So maybe that could be a a part of the discussion the mayor and I have about how we bring this back.
Yeah, there's not, there's not a meeting next week.
There's, but whenever the next meeting is.
The next.
Well, the fourteenth, right? But if we do it in the way that I suggested, we can vote on the entire framework on the fourteenth, including the eight point two, and then commit through resolution to get that money out first and get it out right away. I mean, so there's a way to, I think there's a way to do it.
That would be, that would be good. And and as you look at that, those dollars, um, thinking about placemaking and how, you know, and again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting more dollars in any one specific spot, but how the that crossover works. So the pop ups and the creative economy dollars, how much of that can be used um by arts, the arts community working in conjunction with the business community to reopen downtown, for example. Um, I think we can do better in leveraging our own dollars. So just that as you all think about this and and reframe it or bring it back, that's a piece that that I would love to to see on it.
You know, and and one part of it, Vice Mayor, is that we're going to look at all these proposed expenditure plans and kind of align them with what the uh what the interim final rule is from the Feds and C. But the likelihood of those being eligible now, those I think would need to be prioritized over some of the other ones that we still are waiting for feedback on.
Great. And and and.
That's another filter we could use.
No, that's great. And and just as FYI on the Al Fresco Dining, I believe there was two million dollars for that. Came out of a discussion, certainly from the business community, but with Matt Ironman about them building models that could be for downtown or anyone around in the outskirts and in the urban corridors. So that's very much something that's that's for the entire community.
Well.
Um, the the other two things, I guess, I'm going to leave some stuff out because I know we got a long night here. The other two things on the equity piece, I'm I'm happy that if if the mayor wants to convene the ad hoc sooner rather than later. Um, we're not going to get to the full complement of 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 metrics that we want to use over time. But I think there's some stuff fairly easy that we can do. And I would go back to Aggie Square and look at the um the critical zip codes that we use uh to look at jobs. So that could be something we can look at under resourced neighborhoods. We could look at um to race generally. We we know by zip code and we're going to have data pretty soon as well. So at least not using it as much to make decisions, but using it to track uh our outcomes, I think we could get to that pretty quickly.
Yeah, I I think that if we, uh, as a stopgap, this is something that Councilmember Gera had brought up in previous meetings at open session is that it's taken a while to get here. We need to do something uh quickly. And so if there's a set of criteria that the council puts out saying three to four or five that we want to use as a lens for this hundred and twelve million dollars, we can do that. We just need to make sure.
I think we can. And and we know that data kind of travels and hurts. So it's not like we need twenty five indicators. If we get right, three to five indicators and track those, I think we'd be in good shape, at least for this piece of the.
Sure.
Um, and 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 then the final piece, and this is a request as well, is that everything we do in this hundred and twelve million, we provide metrics for. Um, Mr. Lolo, we talked about this briefly, but I think that we have an opportunity here to start working with with some of the work that we've done in the past. Um, every project that we do uh here, every initiative, if we provide metrics, we'll know if we're successful or not. And doing that at the outset, rather than trying to come back at the end of the day, works really well. I think it should be pretty straightforward. Um, you know, and and whether it's our ad hoc that helps with that or staffs comes up with that, or whomever is applying for the money comes up for it. I think I want to leave that all to you, but I think we have to have a set of those uh to be able to look at it and be smart about how this money was spent and and how we're accounting for it. Because, you know, uh, I think that um one result of of both the cares money and this money, and this is a a big positive, is the engagement that we've seen from the community. So I think we need to really up our level of accountability in some ways to the community about how we're spending these dollars, where they're going and what impact they're having. So uh, happy to talk more about that off.
You know, Vice Mayor, as a matter of fact, it's a requirement of A R P to have the metrics. It's not that that we we need to kind of pull together certain metrics. There are uh baseline requirements that we have to report on in order for these expenditures to be eligible for.
That's great. And and maybe, I don't know if it's possible to have those when we're voting on this framework as well. So they accompany what we're doing. I I know there's some things that, well, the details will take a while longer to figure out and who we work with. Um, but that that comes back as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm I'm done.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Uh, Councilmember Jennings.
Yeah, I want to thank the Vice Mayor on the conversation with the metrics. And um it was a part of one of the things that I was going to talk about. But I think it's really important to all that we're doing that we start with the end in mind and have the metrics that of the success that we want to see happening. So I just want to, since he's left off there, I just wanted to build on that thought and that comment. Mayor, I want to thank you for the solid foundation that you've given us. I read your comments right before you gave us the five uh categories. You say, I recommend the following categories to focus on necessary expenditures expenditures to address the ongoing effect of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And you hit it, you hit a home run. Uh, if you were in Yankee Stadium, you'd be rejoicing all the way around the bases. Um, I know you want to be in Giants. I know you want to be, I know you want to be in Giants. All right, I'll put you in Giants. All right, I'll let you go where you need to go. But you hit the home run. I just want you to know that. Um, and I and I really appreciated the fact that you could have easily, number one, could have been homelessness. But in fact, number one was small business and commercial corridor revitalization. Something so, I mean, not to say that homelessness is not, but just the message that you sent by starting with small business and commercial corridor revitalization. You take a look at how the money was spent in that category, we definitely need uh North SAC. Um, we definitely need downtown and Old Sacramento. And the um Inclusive Economic Development Ca- uh Collaborative has just done incredible work that we want to continue that work. We just don't want to start and stop. We want to continue that work. And so with the number of collaboratives that were there involved, the people that were involved in that collaborative, we want to keep them engaged and help them, help them to make the businesses successful. And they gave me a word on what they've done to make sure that businesses were successful during this other pandemic. So I just want to say congratulations. And then I just want to thank the sixty callers that called in tonight. Um, I know I've got more than sixty who wrote letters, emails to me uh and and to the rest of the council, just voicing their strong opinion. And that's how you know that you had a solid plan, Mayor, because there wasn't much controversy about this plan. So many people were in favor with it and so many people, you know, applauded it. And you know, there may be one or two things that we want to do to make it better. And I've heard all my my colleagues, you know, Northgate, I feel definitely needs some love and care. We've heard that at this council for a number of years. Um, and we need to make some investment in Northgate. And of course, Co- Councilmember Vang with the racial equity. And of course, Councilmember Vang with the racial equity work, we need to make a statement by making that in the forefront of everything we do as well. And I know we'll get there. But when I take a look at the amount of money that we're spending in homelessness, housing, in, in workforce, youth workforce, training, in the gang task force, and, and, and then on top of it, the valuing of the city employees. And this is the last thing I'll say because I know we want to, our next meeting, value of the city employees, and even though we don't have the details to that tonight, just thinking of the city employees in the midst of this pandemic and making sure that we, we look at them and show them that we care about them as much as we care about our constituents and our business owners and our homeless. Just the fact that we put 20%, 18%, $20 million, $25 million total in that category says a lot. And so I'm looking forward to the city manager to see what kind of plan you come back with us on how we can utilize those funds. But I'm glad that we made that a priority category in this foundation, in this plan that you have in front of us. So I'll stop there, just say, great job, thank all the callers, thank my colleagues for their comments. A great job, I'm happy to be a part of it, looking forward to the next step that we go forward with. Can't hear you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lolo, last word for now, and then I want to make an announcement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make it very quick. And that is, you know, I guess it's addressed to Mr. City Manager on, you know, developing some kind of strategy that we can use or utilize our CBOs to make sure that we're utilizing this properly. And then also, when do you think that we can get the metrics on the CARE Act with some of the CBOs that we utilize on that kind of wave? So we can kind of see where, what direction we need to go? And, you know, any suggestion on the process on having the community also involved? That would be great, but getting that metric from the CARES Act on all the CBOs that were utilized and what was the end result? I think that would be a huge help for us, at least for me within, within the district, to kind of see who accomplished what, that would be great. So curious, when, when do you think that the council can see that report?
So likely ARP, like the ARP funding, the CARES Act funding also has some reporting requirements. And though that data is still coming in, I think, I don't know if Laney's on the call here. Maybe she could talk a little bit more about when the last reporting comes in, when we can report out to the council on how all those funds were expended and some of the metrics that are tied to that funding.
Right, hi, Laney Millsign, Assistant City Manager. The CARES Act had a very different report, set of reporting requirements. So metrics were specific to each contract. So we're going to have to circle back with all of our contract managers, which Councilmember Chenier pointed out, also all had full-time jobs before they became CRF project managers. And look through each of the contracts for each of the deliverables. The CARES Act or the ARP dollars are infinitely more detailed in the reporting requirements. And so that will be part of each of their quarterly reporting. So, so it's, it's a different, it's a different date certain. Our last reporting hopefully will be September 30 for CRF, but that doesn't necessarily account for all of the metrics, which will have to be gathered separately. And I think that's why the city manager indicated that ARP will be easier in some of the lessons learned and that give to less people have less contracts to manage and people to hound. But the reporting and the metrics, the outcomes will be infinitely more complicated. So who can participate will be limited on their ability to provide this metric data, whatever it ends up being. And I hope that answered your question. We do have some work to do on the CRF dollars to look at outcomes.
So pretty much, we were hopeful that each one of those CBOs would submit their, their work, how much they got and what they got accomplished before we start talking about ARP funding with any CBOs.
I think it's going to be in parallel because there's going to be overlap.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that there's some great organizations there that we want to make sure to get, you know, our support. And I don't want to miss those, they might be small, not, they're not as big as some of the other CBOs. I just don't want to drop the ball on, I mean, some of the smaller ones that have been even more effective. And so having some data regarding that CARES Act will definitely be helpful, I think, for the whole council to see who was able to accomplish what.
That is going to be.
If I can, Howard, just if I can, I, I think it's really important, Sean, that on the CARES money, we basically were getting new guidance on a daily basis, number one. Number two, we had, before they changed it, we had an incredibly short period of time to get the funds out and get something done with them. So it's, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison at all, we have a lot more time. We have the luxury of time on this one. But it was very, both for the city and the CBOs, it was a really difficult situation trying to get anything done as quickly as they were mandated to. At first, I think the money went out in September and they were supposed to be done with all of their metrics and everything they were asked to do by December of the same year. So ramping up, building infrastructure, all those things were really, really difficult. So just to keep that in mind as we, as we kind of review what happened.
And that dovetails with the recommendations that you will see in this memo that talks about lessons learned, that maybe we don't contract with so many smaller contracts, you know, the 10, 15, $20,000 contracts. But with larger CBOs that could manage some of the smaller ones as well. So it'll, it'll be forthcoming. And, yeah, absolutely, the, the metrics piece on ARP, as I mentioned earlier, is a requirement for eligibility.
Last, last comment, if I may, and then I'm going to have some good news to tell you all about tonight's schedule. So bear with me just for a moment. But last comment, I just cannot tell you how much I appreciate this community, its input and my colleagues here. Boy, it's just such strength and commitment to all of our communities. You know, as Mayor, I am very sensitive to ensuring that I am responsive, and I know the city manager is as well, to all eight of you. And maybe that can sometimes result in trying to spread some of the resources around, maybe, maybe arguably too thinly. And I heard a little of that today, this afternoon. I heard the North Gate argument loud and clear. You know, the first place I lived in Sacramento when I moved here from Davis was South Natomas. I love South Natomas and North Gate. And I hear the argument that we should dedicate a specific and, and, and real amount of money to North Gate. That's one of, that's my main takeaway here tonight, okay? Take that in and expect a revised proposal based upon some of the input that I've heard here tonight, okay? So, listening with both ears. Thank you, that ends the, this part of the presentation, more to come. Are there council ideas and questions? Then I'll make the announcement about tonight's schedule.
Mayor, I have a brief.
Go ahead.
So first, I wanted to thank you for including the Sure Center in the, in the conversation. I forgot to mention that in my comments, but here's what I wanted to say. Bringing Lloyd Conley onto the team was sheer brilliance on, on the part of our mayor. Lloyd Conley is an exceptional individual and he's going to do nothing but great work for us in managing the master siding or comprehensive siding plan moving forward. Mayor, thank you, really personally, thank you, great job on that one.
Well, thank you. Well, Lloyd, Lloyd, who I hope you will all meet, if you haven't met him, is, is one of the great public servants in Sacramento history, really. City council member, state assembly member, judge, administrator of the courts. Integrity, smarts, commitment, heart, all of it, times, times 100. And he wants to, in his retirement, come here and help us implement our comprehensive siding plan. And he'll, he's collaborative too, work with all of us, but boy, what added value and a gift for the city. So thank you. I was going to, you know, welcome him formally at some point here as well. So listen, this has been a long afternoon and a very productive afternoon. I've consulted a little bit offline with a colleague, Councilmember Valenzuela, with Chair Guerrero, and the Police Commission with Chris Collin and Howard Chan. And I think the staff has put together, you know, a good, solid presentation. But I frankly look at, I think there's more work to do. I want to have more commission, conversations with, with the Commission, Mr. Guerrero. And given that we're not going to get started here for another 15 or 20 minutes, I'd like to put off that item. And I promise you, we won't delay it indefinitely in any way. I'll work with all of you, with Councilman Valenzuela and the Commission, and we'll, we'll get this back on, okay? So that'll save us a little bit of time tonight. And then I'll announce that at the beginning of the meeting, all right? If there's nothing else to come before us, the city clerk says she needs 15 minutes. Do you want to get going right away or do you want to take a half hour break, members? What do you say? Do you want to give 15 minutes or 30?
15 minutes.
15, okay, I see 15, okay. We will reconvene at 6:20 for the afternoon meeting. Nothing else to come before the council, we are adjourned, thank you.